Good morning. The January 9th, 2024 Boardwork Session is being held offsite at the Children's Hunger Project. Thank you guys for coming offsite. This is fun. It's a good opportunity for us to serve together. Paul, if you will, give us a roll call, please.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Perfect. And I don't know if we have a flag somewhere, but we are going to stand for the pledge, which is...
There's the big one, my friend.
Okay.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Well, thank you guys so much for coming this morning. I'm excited. You know, every time we have an offsite, we get the opportunity to kind of bond, I feel like, as a board a little bit more. And really, you know, Mr. Susan, I'm going to go ahead and say thank you to you because this was your idea last year for us to have an offsite in January, and I thought that was really powerful. We got to really vision cast on some things that we wanted to see accomplished in this upcoming year and hash out some things that maybe we want to do differently. And so I want to thank Kendall. Kendall's the first one on the agenda this morning. He's probably going, oh, here we go. So I asked Mr. Moore to come in. If you're not familiar with Kendall, he is an advocate for us. So he's somebody that we can call when we have tough issues or things that are a little sticky to work through. And so I just asked Kendall, hey, can you do me a favor? Can you come in, sit with our board for a little while, and just give us some honest feedback on things that you see that we could improve in? And really, the overall goal is if the board improves, our school district improves. And so that was my heart behind asking Kendall to come. So I appreciate him being willing to come here and just tell us from an outsider, hey, you're watching these meetings, you're a professional, you're in the business world, you're hearing all of the chatter that goes on. Tell us what we can do that would help us as a board work together and become stronger. So I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Kendall, and let you take it from here.
I thought there were lots of other things that I might go first. First, let me say good morning to everyone. Madam Chair, I appreciate the invite to come. And full candor, looking around the table, I don't think out of the five of you that there's anybody I don't know. If you kind of think about it, some of you I've probably known for 20 years or more. Others of you met you as you were kind of pursuing your process toward the school board during, you know, elections candidacy. And we've had the chance to kind of chat about a lot of things that are made outside of that context as you've kind of moved forward from that. And so when the chairman mentioned this a few days ago and kind of thought through it a little bit, the offsite does create a unique environment, right? It is still the same in the sense that the public is present and it is recorded for the public record, but you're away from your traditional agenda items with a chance to have a more open dialogue relative to kind of who and what you are. And obviously, there's been some discussions about board governance in that regard. And as I said to Dr. Rendell yesterday, I hope that the board will avail itself of a traditional board governance consultant. I know that he had in mind some thought processes of some really super solid individuals that do board governance for a living. And that's certainly not me. And I was thinking of it more in terms of, and the chairman asked me to give some open and honest thoughts about things that I saw. And I will say upfront, some of them are facts and some of them are my opinions. And when they are clearly my opinions, I'm going to lay them out, you know what I mean, ultimately as such. But in thinking through that, I look at it more as board dynamics than board governance, right? Because the governance component does have some structured rules, and I think you should go through a technical process to establish a set of rules or reestablish. We'll talk about that in a little bit because there already are some rules in dynamic, I mean, some governance rules that ultimately exist that when I say this board, I'm not sure that it's the five of you who approved it, but ultimately, all the things that were done by your predecessors ultimately belong to you, you know what I mean, in terms of continuing those. So just talking a little bit about board dynamics, the things that we see, and ultimately why we should be even considering board dynamics. Why is it even important? I mean, does it even really matter, you know, for that matter, that we, and I say we, the five of you, as a deliberative body? What does that mean in terms of board dynamics? Does it really make the decisions any better or any worse? How does it impact you and the public and kind of a variety of things? And so, you know, I pulled this out this morning, and it is something that I ultimately share with any and all public officials that we talk to, deal with, work for, and the like. And I've shared this with some of the board members individually, and I'll share this with you. Typically, our work is working for people who want to work with you or for you, okay? We work typically for outsiders. Most of the time, we are not representing the government entity itself, okay? So we are typically looking at government entities and governing boards from the outside perspective. In this scenario and setting, I've got a little bit of an inside view and an outside view kind of collectively, right? So it's a little bit of a unique setting or thought process, ultimately, to say the least. But let me say this upfront, and I thought about it, you know, a bit this morning. What I've got to say is not rocket science, and what I've got to say, you've probably heard from someone, if not yourself, at least once. So I don't necessarily know that it's going to be anything new or some magic bright idea, but I do think self-reflection and self-introspection, both individually and as a board, are going to be or are going to be extremely important in terms of how you move forward. So I pulled this out, and most of you have probably seen it. I am a BPS product. I was about to say Manatee Elementary, that's my kids. Gulfview Elementary, Kennedy Middle School, and Cocoa High School. And when I graduated from Cocoa High School, and I actually have 50 copies of it that I share with elected officials and the others. For my graduation in 1988, I received a book from an elected official, Dick Blake, who I ultimately ended up serving on the city council, when he was my president, I mean, my principal at Cocoa High School. And his graduation gift to me was a book, I think many of you are probably familiar. All I needed to know I learned in kindergarten. If you haven't seen it, I have multiple copies. I think it's less than $25, so I could probably share it with you in terms of that regard. But the first page of the book says, all I read, all I really needed to know about how to live, what to do, and how to be, I learned in kindergarten. Wisdom was not at the top of the graduate school mountain, but on a sand pile at Sunday School. And here are a few of the things that I learned. Share everything. Play fair. Don't hit people. Put things back where you found them. Clean up your own mess. Don't take things that aren't yours. Say you're sorry when you hurt somebody. When we go out into the world, watch out for traffic, hold hands, and stick together. Everything you need to know is somewhere out there. The golden rule, love, basic sanitation, ecology, politics, equality, and sane living. What would happen if all governments had a basic policy to always put things back where they found them and clean up their own mess? And it's still true, no matter how old you are, when you go out into the world, it's best to hold hands and stick together. Okay? Happy to ultimately share that with you. And for those of us sitting around the table as educated and politically elite as you are, representatives of the, I don't know what the districts are, 125,000-ish plus people that each of you represent, that would seem to be such a simplistic and trite thought process for the super duper complicated things that you guys do every single day, for the billions of dollars that flow through who and what you are ultimately as a board, right? But if you look at the dynamics that I see from the outside, and most particularly, I will tell you, I took the opportunity in the last 48 hours to re-watch the last four board meetings, okay? And a few things that I took from them that I would be interested in sharing with you and be interested to hear the dialogue that you have relative to that. We're not in the, as I like to tell my clients sometimes, we're not in the 13th grade, right? So we're beyond really caring what people think about us personally, right? We're kind of beyond that phase in our lives. But part of my question to you that I always ask electeds and our clients is this, taking the opportunity to have an honest look for yourself in the social mirror and tell me what people think. For me as an elected, for me as an individual, and for us as a collective body, what do people think when they see the Brevard County School Board, right? And there's probably a range of emotions. So, I mean, does anybody have a suggestion of what you think people think?
I think people think we're self-serving.
Self-serving is one. Any others?
Dysfunctional, I think. I think that is a word I've heard many times in the public, is this is a very dysfunctional board.
So self-serving, I'll make the notes for you. Self-serving, dysfunctional, any others?
Disinterested in the goal.
Disinterested.
Distracted, I guess would be another way.
Distracted. Others?
I hate to be harsh, but I only say this just because I've seen it so many times in the social media, is that we're a joke.
Yeah, and I mean this like about, I know people think everything I said out loud about myself, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean holistically.
I mean, what's the honest feedback of what you hear?
This is also, I'm not them, so you can feel free to put me out after this is over. So this is volunteer and voluntold. So looking in the other direction won't stop me from asking you, so I'll wait till we hear from you, Matt, until we move forward.
Well, I've heard it, you know, dysfunctional is a repeat. But again, I take it from those who you actually hear from on social media, who their life has to be in a certain position to be paying attention to the school board as much as they do, so.
Matt?
It's pretty much everything that everybody else said. Depending on who you're talking to depends on what they believe the overall goal is. We've accomplished a lot over the last year, and when they look at what they found and see the people that know what we've done, they're like, they are moving forward, they are doing stuff. But the political governance becomes a circus between the people that are coming to speak, between the political divides, between the parties, and that's what creates this aura of non-governance. But if you look at the undertow of what we've actually accomplished is pretty good. The problem is that we don't have a strong communication system or anything that can get over the top because what we're dealing with on top of our governance problem, which is a governance problem, and I'll admit it, but the other component to it is, is that we are in the most politically divided time so that people will focus more upon the governance and the, you know what I mean, the books and stuff like that, rather than the advancements in career and technical, rather than the advancements in many of the other areas that we've done. And that's unfortunate. And you've seen it even inside the newspapers of today, that they would rather write about those politically dividing areas rather than what the school district is ultimately doing. So I agree with you 100%, and I think that's my evaluation of what it is.
So you raised two or three issues that, Matt, we'll talk about a little bit in detail. But tell me this, almost everyone had some form of negative connotation to give in your own self-description about how you operate. And you presume from the fact that I asked, maybe that we were looking for something that wasn't right. And there are many things that are done right and ultimately done well, but the immediate connotation that you had of your own self-reflection, almost every single word, with the exception of the kind of but at the end that, Mr. Susan, I apologize, I know most of you well, so if I call you by your first name, it's not intended to be anything disrespectful. But ultimately, the thing that Matt raised were a few additions, but the bulk of the comments were ultimately negative. Tell me why you think is that that's the case? Is it the way you feel and you don't think that there have been positives? Is it you think that people only see the negatives? Is it the way you feel about yourself? Why is it that we had six or seven negative words and kind of a sliver of onesie twosie, you know? These are the bad things, but we've accomplished this.
Well, I think part of it comes down to the way people think about government in general, because generally, the people who are in government are farther removed. You know, you think about Congress, the president, the governor, everybody's farther removed, so it's easier to talk bad about them when it makes you unhappy because you don't know them. Even though we're closer to our communities and we know, I think people know us more personally, still generally, we're mostly removed. People don't have individual conversations with us. So it's easier to criticize someone that seems like they're, you know, disconnected from the real world, you know? But, so I think there's already that, that tendency, and we have to criticize government and leaders. But then, you know, and to Matt's point, we are dealing with the same things all other school boards are dealing with. We're all dealing in that controversial time. But I think sometimes our board, over the last couple of years, and I would say the last, you know, three, three years, four years, come on, four years, you know, has, we've had some drama. I mean, let's just be honest, we all, no, we've had drama within the board that makes it worse. And so if we're already a target, because that is just everybody's way of dealing with people who are in leadership, we're just easy targets, and then we kind of make some missteps or just, you know, show our happy heiny, as one of our favorite radio hosts likes to say, then it just makes it worse, right? And so I think that's where some of that comes from. And I'll be quite honest, you know, it's, Russ announced that thing about it's School Board Appreciation Month, and I just kind of cringed.
I did, too.
I was like, oh, no!
I was like, what are you thinking?
You know, because the last thing I want is, and you know, as leaders, I want us to be servant leaders. I don't think we need to do this and chocolates, I mean, even though bring on chocolates, but...
Good enough.
You know, I did, I did just get a cringe a little bit because I thought, how many people out there, we ticked off over the last three or four years, on the right and the left, this is not a political persuasion because it's just gone back and forth, whoever has ticked us off at the moment, or we've ticked off at the moment, like, how many people are just going to go, oh, my gosh, you know? So I, that was, I think that's where some of that comes from. So, and I, too, believe we have done really good work, but just because it just is that, you know, we're easy targets, and sometimes we've made ourselves a worse target.
And if I may, Kendall, what we're talking about is not a byproduct of specifically this board, but a carryover of what the previous couple of years have been. And if you look back, just like what Ms. Campbell was rightfully saying, it has been a battleground for three or four years. And I applaud Ms. Wright for bringing this, and I applaud you for coming today, to try to get us back to where we can start governing rather than, you know what I mean, what it's been like for the last three, four years. Because if you look back at the previous year, you know what I mean, 2021, say, for instance, our, we had packed rooms every single board meeting for three quarters of the year, and it was 100 times worse inside those board meetings than it is currently. And I think that it's just a carryover of how we're doing things, right? So I applaud you for bringing this forward, but I did want to say thank you for bringing that up, that this is something that's been going on for a while, and I feel it's perpetuated by much of the dynamics that we have, and I appreciate you coming.
Well, let's talk about those two dynamics for a second. So here's how I describe what happens downstairs, well, I guess you don't have a second floor, what happens in your boardroom when I describe this to clients that are coming to do work in front of a deliberative body. You sit high, and everyone else sits low. You control when they talk, how they talk, and what they can say. Loads of people show up with very strong opinions, they wear funny colored shirts and other kinds of things to be able to make their point. They squeeze into this one-room environment, and then when that little red light comes on, it causes people to act in a very different and strange way, both people on the dais and off the dais from that regard. So the dynamics of political rooms with deliberative bodies and the public are already a unique dynamic that takes place. You have five people that were elected by the people, who have two people that work directly for them, and another 9,000 that kind of sit on the other side, who happen to serve 70,000-ish kids, right? That's the dynamic. And then if you fast forward a little bit, and I'll tell my own story, we, from a client perspective, historically had done the bulk of our work at the county commission. And one day after a very difficult day in the early 2000s at the county, as I was driving out, I looked across the street and I said, you know what? There's this calm, cool, collected thing across the street called the school board.
Oh, wow.
And there's a billion dollars here, and there's a billion dollars over there. You guys were having a meeting, the parking lot was empty, it seemed like no one cared. And magically, over the three or four years that you talked about, that same room with all those dynamics has become the center of cultural wars in America, regardless of what side you're on, doesn't really matter. So the complicated nature of the environment is dramatically different over the last few years than it has been ultimately in the past. Now, all of a sudden, you got more parents, you've got other stakeholders in the community, you've got city council members, county commissioners, state house, state senate, governors, presidents, and congressmen, all telling you how to do your job. Not so much for some of your other elected peers around town, but for the school board, it has become the central dynamic for cultural wars in America, and all moved across the street. 10 years ago, 15 years ago, when I had that experience and I looked across the street, there was almost no one in the meeting room. Today, we're thinking through things about how many protesters are going to be outside. You've spent tons of money on security and how people are now coming into the room and the environment and concerned about your own safety. It is a dramatically different environment where you have to govern than has been the case, maybe in American history at school, or maybe there have been some of these periods like this in the past, but we are in a very different place and space. And so for those of you that were here before that, and now that you see that, it is a dramatically different dynamic. And we're not saying it's good or bad. We're not, it doesn't matter left or right, it doesn't matter Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter liberal or conservative. It's the nature in which you govern, and it does make what you do and your job far more complicated. And so, interestingly enough, I almost look at these offsites as somewhat like family talk, right? Like you have at home, right? You can say real honest things, now, when you're at home, there aren't other people around, right? Thousands who may listen, watch, and those kinds of things. But ultimately, if you are really honest with yourself, the dynamics all around you are changing, and you have to find a way to keep the board dynamic in a good place, in a positive place, in the midst of all the things. And there used to be, if you think about like a BMX bike, it used to be like a mag wheel where there were only like three or four spokes. Today, it's more like a 10-speed today, right? The number of stakeholders that are involved are, you know, 50, 100, there's lots of them. And you know what's even more strange? Your ultimate constituency that you serve, the majority of them cannot participate in the process of your selection. The majority of those 70,000 people are not qualified to vote for you. But all these other people, I'm a parent, I'm all those things, show up to tell you how to govern and regulate this group of customers that you ultimately serve. It is the most unique dynamic, I think, in American politics today. More complicated, I think, than some of the things in Washington or Tallahassee, because the other thing you can't do is you can't escape. I want to talk to you about it at Publix, I want to talk to you about it at church, I want to talk to you about it every single where you, I talked to Matt Susan about it at the Orange Bowl game in Miami. He was enjoying himself and his child, and he just couldn't get by without, I wanted to talk about something that was going on at BPS.
Yeah.
And just when he thought it was safe to put on a Florida State jersey and escape, you cannot, right? So when you...
It's okay, there wasn't much to watch.
Oh, bird. Oh, that was a little ding.
I'm a FSU fan, too, now, no way.
I am a proud graduate of the University of Florida, so I'm going to leave that alone a little bit. But ultimately, as Matt, you referenced before, there are the external dynamics and the internal dynamics. So I never want you to look past all of the things that are going on. It doesn't give us a license to do some of the things I think we've done. There's still some self-reflection and things that we need to do and change as a part of that process, but get your brain wrapped around, you know what I mean, what that looks like. Some of your predecessors didn't have to worry about the BC SO officers assigned escorting you from the parking lot to your seat, right? That was not a problem before, right? But today, it's a very different dynamic, and we've got to consider that that dynamic could go on for a considerable amount of time. It is not showing any signs of being any different, right? It's the environment in which you govern. And again, not good or bad, just want you to realistically think about the dynamic in which you govern.
And Kendall, if I may, if you...
Sure, no, go ahead, go ahead.
If anybody's ever visited Lincoln Museum in Springfield, Illinois, and walked through it, there's about, halfway through, there's a portion that they talk about the social upheaval of the political events for the 30 years that led up to slavery, right? And it's things that I had not known as an instructor when I was going through teaching social studies, and then I started doing a common theme in my social studies classes over this type of behavior with elected officials. And it is not only this time, like, we feel like this is the apex of a situation, but if you go back in history, based upon every major theme that occurs that is a controversial moment, there is an elected body that becomes the battleground for that. Currently, we are the school board for the social issues, that is us. So it's not anything that we can say that this isn't a moment that is just dynamic to us, it's dynamic to American society in the fact that you have yellow journalism, you have all of those things that drive things, and it's consistent. So thank you for bringing that up.
I want to jump in there, too, because you said something that kind of just triggered a thought process for me, and I've said this since the beginning, identifying our customer. Who is our customer? And I think that's something very, very important. So if we look at this from a business model of our district, our product is education, right? That's what we have to sell, so to speak. Our customer, who is our customer? And our customer, and Kendall, I don't know, maybe we would disagree on this, because I believe our customer is our parent. Our parent is what drives that ship, right? They decide. So the parent can decide, hey, I don't want to buy your product at BPS, I want to buy charter school product, I want to buy private, you know, whatever it is. So I do think that that's a mind shift, to some degree, that the board needs to be cognizant of and paying attention of, because if we identify our customer, then I believe we can sell our product a little bit better. We need to tailor our product towards our customer, which is, I get that the students are a huge part of this, but our parents are the ones that are, like you said, they're the ones that are voting, they're the ones that are making the decisions on behalf of the children that are receiving the product. It is a very unique dynamic, because you're not selling, you're selling to this person, but this person's actually receiving it, kind of, it's a very unique dynamic.
Here's...
Can I jump off that?
Yep.
So I hear you on that, and I agree with you, but I think where a very big difference lies for decisions we make and what drives us individually, and not that one's right or wrong, they're just different, is that you can look at it that way, but ultimately, like, I view it as a right for every child, and I recognize that that parents may not be present, but unfortunately, there are some parents in the world that aren't functioning to make the right decisions for their children. I believe that the product is to grow successful citizens, and moving and shaping the way we do things for all children based on a certain voice doesn't serve the person we're supposed to be serving, which is those children who have a right to that education. And so it's a very different perspective and lens, and not that yours is right and mine is right or wrong or whatever, but it's just a very different perception. And I personally believe, as an educator, I feel like education was, you know, let's be real, deep down in government, that people weren't paying attention to, there was always a war when it came to public education, opinions on how it should be done, and the war of privatization of it. But ultimately, it was kind of like a hands-off thing that people didn't really pay attention to too much.
Right.
And as an educator, if you ask any classroom educator, they care about those kids in their classroom, the outcome of those kids in their classroom, they don't care about the politics, they don't care about appeasing someone so that they don't choose a charter school, they're doing what they think is best for that kid, which, again, when you have 70,000 kids from very different backgrounds, that answer is going to be widely different. And so if we look at it from a business perspective, as in the customer is the parent, I just think you ultimately are going to leave out so many people, because there's no way to appease everybody. And so, again, not that one's right or wrong, it's just a very different lens to look through, and that's what's so complicated about this job, because some... And that's what's so complicated about this job, because some decisions you have to look through that lens that you have, and some I think you have to look through my lens that I have. Um, and you have to, you have to know how to code-switch and figure out which one is the right one to look through at the right moment, and it's not easy. And then especially when you become a new board member, you have to consume all of it and the billion-dollar budget and all the functions that you definitely never interact with before. It's a lot, it's a lot to consume.
Here's why, why I referenced the seventy thousand as your customer. My gut is the number one driver that you asked of Dr. Rendell is student achievement.
It is.
No parent can take the test.
Right.
No parent can get the grade. When you get the things from Tallahassee that dictate how well you've done, that's all been done by somebody in K through twelve, not by me or everyone else at home. Now, legally, I have the ability to make some decisions for that person because they're not eighteen years old. So I am very, 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 very high on the constituent role. But just remember, I mean, maybe you guys tell me, is there anything on the horizon or that you are asking of Dr. Rendell, Mr. Gibson, their team that is more important than student achievement?
No, not, not in my mind, no.
Safety would be-
Safety. You have to make sure that's safe.
So, so, safety and student achievement.
Right.
And I would argue engagement as well, because if a student's engaged, more likely the parent's going to want to keep their kid wherever they are.
And, 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 and don't get me wrong, I'm not lessening the value of the parent, because I was a pretty tough and difficult one. And some of you in this room participated in this process because you were a concerned parent, right? That's what, that's what drove many of us to participation in this process. And, uh, as, as having a new college graduate and a kid in college, I will swear by the BPS education all day. I took a, a tour of alternatives to my home high school. And by the time I was done touring, I ended up right back and put my high school kids on a bus who received a, a Cambridge diploma from Rockledge High School. And I will take it any day, every day, it has now proven itself in spades, okay?
I think, I'll jump in here real quick on the, because I, I think here, when you think about just a specific situation, when we talk about safety and with between students and parents, if we have a something go down and we have had this, and they lock a school down, if there's a parent standing on that door, it doesn't matter how loud they bang on that door, you're not getting in, because we're in lockdown, and at that moment, we're taking care of the people that we're responsible for. And when it's done, then you can have your kid. We're not opening that gate, because you as a parent demand to have your kid pulled in when we're in the middle of a, a lockdown situation. So in those moments, those crucial moments, so I think that, that's one of the things is, you said complicated, Jennifer, that, that is, it is complicated. So I, I think we, it's, we, I don't think we'll be able to drill down and go, it's just this, it's just that, you know, we're, we're gonna have, but we, we do need to be cognizant more than ever before of the parent as the customer. Just like, you know, we're, uh, jeans companies making clo- kids for clothing, or clothing for kids, sorry. Clothing for kids, it's got to fit the kid, but the parent's the one who's buying it, right? So you, you kind of have to do the both and. And then our constituency is, and I think you were starting to hit on this, they, if, you know, there, you know, when we have the millage vote, when we have the sales tax vote, it's kind of a referendum, you know, literally and figuratively, on the job they think that we're doing for them as a community. Are we meeting the things that, the contract that we have? Are we, are we providing the services that they've elected us to provide? So there's a little bit of everything, but our ultimate, the ones that we're serving, when we get down to those crucial moments, like a, you know, it's, it's, it's the kids.
And, and again, I raise it only to raise two issues. Sometimes I think we get so intricately involved that the children move down on the totem pole some. And, and it's not just the, the public, it happens in these heated debates over a variety of things and just keeping in mind that important factor, but also pointing out to you, like I talked about, that, that kind of wheel of spokes, you have so many stakeholders. I mean, now don't get me wrong, as a parent, I do think I'm the number one stakeholder, you know what I mean? As an advocate on behalf of my child for a number of reasons. But aside from that, there are so many people, organizations and things that are now inputting into your process that you've got to consider as a part of who and what you do, alright? So as you look at these things, these are all the externals, right? The, the changing dynamics, the changing culture, all the stakeholders and all those things there, many of the things that you reference are the more introspective things that you think may have gone wrong or where the dynamics may not be right. But just don't forget about the environment around you is consistently and dramatically changing. And sometimes it not only drives you, but it drives the people that are in that room that make what you do more difficult. And hey, I, I know it, I'm, I've been an elected official, but I'm also a constituent. And constituents can be extremely, um, lots of things. I won't ask you to comment on that, right? But lots of things that we can do as outside constituents that make things difficult for you. The way that we speak to you, when we speak to you, the tone and attitude that was used. I was privy to a conversation between one of you and a constituent not too long ago, and I had a high degree of sympathy, because there were, the, the tone, the volume and the expletives were on a pretty high, uh, uh, level as I listened to that conversation take place. And so when it comes to, as I say, kids and animals create a different dynamic in people. You feel a way about children and animals, you can, you can do lots of things to a lot of people, but you should probably leave my children alone, right? The way that people feel about those two things caused them to act and react in a certain way. And so it's just an understanding of the dynamic of all the things going on around you. Don't sell it short for how complicated it is, right? But when we look inside, right, all, many of these things that you brought up didn't talk about what's going on around you. It was more of a self-inditing, for lack of a better phrase, in terms of, in terms of what you saw. So a couple of the, the notes that I made, you know, relative to that, you, Madam Chair, you asked me what I saw, and I'll give you a couple of, of examples. I had a reporter share with me not too long ago that they were going to write about the story behind the story, because the story itself was less marketable than the story behind the story. And I asked the question, tell me what you mean? And what they said was, you know, it was a very important policy issue that was decided. But the dynamics amongst the elected body and terms of how they got to the decision was far more interesting and salacious than ultimately the important policy issue by itself. And as I would say to any elected body, when what you do and how you do it is becoming more news than the action you actually took, it is a time to kind of self-evaluate and reflect on what you've done and how you've done it. So go, go back and think about that. If I'm, if I'm going to write about, well, you know what, they made this hallmark policy decision on this issue. That's the one line, and then the remainder of the article's all about how it went down. This person said this to this, raised a voice, cut this person off, and there was the whole dynamic, I'll use the word that you used, about the drama that took place surrounding that scenario. And so I think it is correct that there is a time and necessity for some level of self-reflection when the how it was done starts to trump why you did it and the actual policy decision that took place. Do you have that same perspective that you think the, the reporter had? Because that's the drama dynamic that you somewhat described, right? It wasn't, I, I think you have accomplished some very significant things in the last short period, right? One of them, including selecting a new leader that was going to carry you forward from here, right? Very, very, very important dynamic, you've made some huge policy decisions. You've done some things for BPS that have been very, very, very solid. But a lot of what you've had to, with all due respect to my dear friend, listen to on the radio in the morning or read about in the paper the next day, wasn't actually the policy decision itself.
Right.
It was the dynamic of how it went down.
Well, a part of me wonders though, is that indicative of the news media outlet? Because I, I truly believe that there are some that exist within our county that are doing everything they can to tear down the school system.
They described it just how you did.
Well, yeah, I guess.
So, so, you can't tell me they're wrong, if they described it the same way you described it.
Sometimes we totally earn it.
Yeah.
It's totally earned, and let's be honest, there's, this is an honest space. There's, there's people here who intentionally sometimes solicit things to certain places on purpose. So it's, it's self-inflicted, right? And, and if you're not willing to accept that and acknowledge that, then it is what it is. I mean, it's self-inflicted. Every time I pick up a phone that has to do with an interview, I have to know what I'm talking about and understand what's going to happen after I have that conversation. You can't pretend that you didn't participate in that if you were a part of that media conversation. And it's across the board, it's not just one news source. But I do hear you on that, like, there's one place that clearly, anytime they're going to stick my name on a headline, they're going to, because they know it's clickbait. They're also accepting money from certain individuals that entices them to do that even more. Those are things we can't control, but, but you can control your own actions and, yeah, yeah.
Honestly, there's some times when the media walk into a workshop or something and the media, or, or a board meeting, and the media's setting up and I'm like, why? Why are they here? But I mean, because we've had drama, whether it's us, between us, and we have had it, or if it's because we've had, you know, somebody coming, and it's sometimes, I'm sure they've been incredibly disappointed, actually.
Yeah, I've seen them leave sometimes.
I enjoy those moments when they pack up and go, oh, there's nothing to see here. I'm like, who called them? And sometimes I go, ask the rest of us to even know, you know, I'm like, why are they here? But I just, you know, I, I have to say this, and we'll, we'll get there. I, there are times, and in fact, just recently, when even this board that has been sometimes, just the best, best description I can get, um, has done really good work together. And I think there are some of those times when it's happened at the end of a really long day, we're all just so exhausted, that everything that's happening is happening to us and we're together, right? But I will give the December meetings, actually, we had a workshop that we, I don't remember if it was one to four, two to four, we had a long workshop, we went all the way up to four thirty, we had a little break, we came back for a really long board meeting, then had some really nasty stuff. And the, and except for there was one moment where somebody, people got snippy. But I, I, I walked out of that meeting going, it was really long and tiring and I was frustrated, but I felt like we did good work, and we did not vote everything the same and, or agree with those things. But we walked out and we, because we, we remained respectful and remained focused on the work. And it is, it is so easy, thank you Kendall for reminding us how hard our job is, because human nature, we're not going to be at our best when people are yelling at us and calling us ugly names. And I'm like, you don't even know me, why don't you have a personal conversation with me? You don't know me, but they're saying things about us and it's, it's easy to get, you know? But I, the moment, the moment we let sarcasm or just, yeah, just personal digs or whatever, and I understand, because I have been more frustrated in the last year, I'll be quite honest. I've been through COVID on this board, the last year was the hardest year of the five. And some of it was the dynamics, and some of it was the decision, and, and some of it was the public. It was the hardest year on this five, but I, when we cannot get to that personal and we can focus on the work, even if we disagree, those are the times where I walk out and go, we did good work today.
Yeah.
You know?
So, I mean, did you want to go?
I did, real quick, because I'd just been quiet. And, and I must go back, probably misunderstood, because when you said anything about self-evaluation over board, and, and I would say dysfunctional is not what, how I would describe it. I, it's kind of how I felt like some of the public perceives it. Because we have done great things. I mean, I think we've, if I had top ten things, reasons I ran, most of those were checked early on. And, uh, e- everything else is just noise, it's just dogs barking in the background. We've been doing good work, great work, I hope it continues. As far as customers, it, it is kind of like marketing a product, because even though we're marketing that product towards those kids, we have to keep an eye on who's purchasing those, and that's the parents. So that's, and, and the main reason I ran is, is, you know, what's best for the students while keeping a, a, an eye on the parents, uh, because you need both of them to buy in on this, uh, product. And I think, you know, BPS is in a wonderful spot. As far as news agencies or people, um, you know, not reporting what, what we actually did is one, it's not important to them, because they're actually looking for clickbait. Or they're, it's a national thing, that's a school board, you might find some fireworks there. That's just white noise, don't care. You know, you can get up and act a fool at a school board meeting, don't care. You can snicker on the board, don't care, uh, because we're doing good things for the, uh, for the students and ultimately, that's, that's why we're there. You know, we've got a great leader in, in place that we feel can take care of student achievement. We're going to keep trying to make the changes in the policies to give them the tools to do that, but, yeah, it's, the, the public persona, I mean, the more I'm out there is, I hear, geez, you guys are brave. You know, can't believe you're, you put up with that and you're still doing good things. We, we did come together and I think we treated the, uh, the teachers well in this contract that we had and worked well with the union. I haven't had a, a teacher say, darn you, you know, we, we, we needed more of that millage money, or we needed more money, or we need. So I think we, we've, we've accomplished great things and, and BPS. I mean, if, if we vanished, I think we're, uh, BPS is on the right trajectory, so we've, we've done good things.
To that point, if I may, we're in the middle of probably the cultural apex for school boards in the last two hundred years. We did a hundred and eighty-degree turn in a matter of twelve months. And that is a ground zero for the yellow journalism that follows every time there's a one of these types of times in history. When I'm speaking of yellow journalism, it's the same time that Pulitzer and Hearst, the two greatest newspaper article writers or from San Francisco to New York, wrote about bringing us into the Spanish-American War. There's all kinds, this is just a common theme. So for us to turn, just like you were saying, and worry about the news organizations or whatever, they are driven for whatever the end result was, whether that's the base that they have or whatever. We haven't been able to get our message out for what we've done that is positive in that time period. I wanted to tell you an example of what he was saying. So the other day, we had a meeting where we were discussing our, um, security specialists and stuff like that. The very next day, um, we didn't speak anything in there about us arming teachers or anything like that. The very next day, we were, I was in front of the Cattlemen's, um, group, talking about our expansion of, of agricultural programs. And I had nine news organizations come out there to interview me from Orlando. They literally drove to Merritt Island to interview me for something that never even happened. And that's the level that they're willing to go to for that story. It's not good or bad, I'm not saying, listen, but, but the bottom line is, is that that's what we're dealing with. And you're a hundred percent right, Kendall, they're more worried about the backstory, about what they can write about. And I don't fault them, listen, all of more power to them, uh, you know? But I think you're right, we need to be able to curb that backstory in order to get the true story of what we're doing out, that's all.
And, and the curbing the backstory is part of the self-introspection component part of it, so-
I have to, I have to add on that. So, like, I respect that we're doing this, and I appreciate that you're doing this, because it's like your first time having this, this moment. But my buy-in is very short, and I'm honest about that, I'm honest about it every time we had one of these. Because ultimately, we're human beings sitting in this room, and we can't control the adult human beings that are in this room. And when people are only willing to go so far to be honest and introspective about stuff, that's the only movement you're going to make. But, you know, I keep hearing that we've done such good work over the past twelve months, but I have a very different opinion of that, I really do. Because when we have to point to one specific meeting where it went well, that's actually not a good thing, that we can hyper-focus on one meeting where we did a good job. It should be difficult to figure out when we did a good job, right? It should be the opposite. And I would argue that all the incredible things that have happened for BPS over the past twelve months, were actually a responsibility of our staff and our teachers, not the work of the board or a decision or, or, or drive of the board. And I think we need to be honest about that. Like, what board-led initiative did we do in the past twelve months that made significant changes for our students? The wonderful positive things that we always hear about and we post about on our social media page for BPS is incredible. That these kids are making incredible achievements, our teachers are being nominated for national awards, our staffs are getting audit, uh, audit awards, and it's awesome and it's incredible. We're still doing really great things as BPS. But I think it's, I think we're a little too quick to say, like, we've done great things as a board the past twelve months. I just think we need to be honest, what have we focused on collectively as a board together to make a difference? And what's frustrating for me is, granted, when I got on this board, we had to deal with COVID, so it was like odd to even have a focus. But what was weird to me was that we didn't have in these yearly meetings an agreement of like the one goal, and it, and not a policy goal, but like a mission, one simple- And it, and not a policy goal, but like a mission, one simple focused, hyper-focused mission as a board of what are we gonna do together and accomplish? So for instance, if we're all super passionate about improving Gardendale, coming together and like what one project can we accomplish for Gardendale as a board, so that number one, there's always gonna be something that brings us together on a on a ideology standpoint and keeps us student focused and allows us to break through the noise to say we did wonderful things for our kids as a board collectively. Something that can't be divisive because we agree that that's our focus. And and again, something really hyper-focused, not something global that we can sensationalize at a policy. Um, but something that really makes a difference and an impact and makes us feel good and makes the kids feel good and makes the community feel good. Um, and again, I'm not saying I'm right and everyone else is wrong, but it's it's fair. Like, I just have to speak up and say, I don't feel that way. Um, and I also think it's unfair to not recognize that the majority of those positive things really are coming from the people who are who work for us and continue to go through the noise and through the crazy dynamics and through the chaos and instability and perform for our kids.
So, let me, so just being being cautious of time. Let's transition or focus in 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 one area. We could certainly debate the idea of what's been accomplished or not, right? And I think that there's there. I think the reason the ultimate question was asked to have the conversation today was about the how dynamic of how you've gotten there, not the end-all-be-all-to-do. In the end, there may be great decisions that have been made and it was a painful process. So I'll I'll give you three or four examples that that uh came up. Number one, I would ask you just to remember that this is one board, not five board members. It is, it is one deliberative body. And when you publicly make statements that are negative about another board member, you might as well be talking about yourself.
Yeah.
Right? It is a collective.
Very good advice.
If you would like to express your political power and Shaw, it is, my wife and I had this going joke from when we first got married and and one day I said to her, um, just because you change your tone and change your volume doesn't make you right. Okay? Um, you have policies already in place. So there was a big discussion about, well, maybe you should have this policy about how the board dynamic should operate. And there's an existing policy. Maybe part of the question is whether or not the policy is being followed. That's that's number one. But there's a level of accountability for that that belongs to the board and that belongs to each individual. Uh, Jennifer, you brought it up. It is a group of adults around here and we should be able to self-govern ourselves for policy. Now, what can we not legislate? We can't legislate honesty. We can't legislate respect. Um, uh, Dr. Jolie Smith used to tell us when we were very, very young elected officials, um, two two pieces of advice. Number one, your your power is in your vote, not in your voice. Raise your hand and close your mouth. Okay? Sometimes it's the editorializing and the style points, from my private opinion, that get you in the positions where you are. Alright, because to me, it really doesn't matter where you are on the policy. In in the professional context, I have my own personal political views, but that's not not what this is about. The, your ability to get from point A to point B in terms of making a decision. And God bless these gentlemen who have to go back and listen to the tape and try to really understand what board direction was from some of the ways that the conversations take place, right? And so, there is a policy. I would suggest, as I said before, that you go back and have a consultant come in and walk through that policy with you to make sure that it is still viable, the right thing to do, the best thing in those scenarios. But every individual has to make a personal commitment that they are going to follow it. And as you said, no, no other board member can be the policeman over honesty, the policeman over respect, the policeman over that. But the one thing you've gotta be careful about is you cannot be upset about the way the public reacts if they treat you the same way you treat each other. Gotta be careful about that, right? They, some of them mimic the behaviors that they see from you, which makes them think that it's okay, alright? And and don't get me wrong. I believe that the the microphone is an open forum for people to speak for things that are legally, ethically. There's a, there's, there's some parameters, right? And Madam Chair, you've had to be the parameter police, which is, which is not an easy thing to do. But but ultimately, you have to be careful the way you engage each other and particularly the way that you engage them, right? They may think differently and all that, but you, no matter what policy you put in place, you're not going to be able to legislate honesty and respect and just kind of the simple, we talked about in kindergarten. The simple basics that ultimately say, we as a board are gonna commit to these rules. And I'm gonna commit to making sure that I not only live by them, but I'm gonna self-police myself. As it relates to this, in terms of my own decorum and how I conduct myself amongst my peers, because it's hard for you to tell a person at the microphone that it's not going to be tolerated when they just listen to you do it to each other. It's a very hard and complicated and difficult scenario. It may be right and you may have the the legal ability and the power to do it, but it makes a very difficult opportunity for the public. And some of the things that I think you talked about and you described at the beginning, they come from that. They don't come from the fact that you're not making good decisions and getting the work done. I mean, you're you're, you you are actually turning out the policy, right? It's the pathway of how you get there that ultimately can become the problem. And and as I've heard from some of you individually, those are the dynamics that create the greatest concern, right? There's nothing wrong with a person who thinks opposite from you. Absolutely nothing wrong with that. The people elected them, just like they elected you. So on that basis, everybody comes forward on an equal footing, alright? But just remember, it's not me. It's going to be we, no matter what you think, right? Um, uh, I was, I was privy to a conversation the other day where I felt as though one board member was urging outside public entities to target or attack another board member. Now, there's nothing wrong with you, you know what I mean, talking to the public and pushing those things. But be careful not to make negative statements relative to your peers when you are talking to people outside, you know what I mean, of this board. When you wonder how sometimes they feel that way, sometimes it's driven by some of the things that you say, both on the dais and publicly, alright? And and hey, look, there's nothing wrong with having opposing policy positions. But in the end, as I I've said this to to some of you privately, you know the best way to show your power is to get two of your peers to raise their hand when you do. Cuz that's how the policy is gonna be made. You know, whether it's good policy or bad, policy is made by this board when three people raise their hand. Good, good or bad?
I wanna, you know, we, I don't disagree with what you have said and that's something I said to myself too about the outside and the media, but I I think we have to be honest and say, we did invite some of that because, you know, there's a reason why the Cambers County River Bar, we are not the biggest county in the state. We're like ten or eleven. There's a reason why they don't, you know, why they've come more in the last few years. And and I think it's it's us because we're, uh, you know, at different times, sometimes fairly, not fairly. But I will tell you one thing that I've had to put into practice for a long time. I actually started doing it as a pastor's wife. Is somebody gave the advice of having a thick skin and a tender, but still having a tender heart. And we can't afford from the dais to say, forget the public. Forget this person who does, who disagrees with me. Who cares, whatever. We, it's a constituent. And I can, you know, I I joke because I, the one thing I miss about having, wearing a mask on the dais is I used to spit my tongue out behind my mask at people. I'm like, nobody ever knew. I couldn't roll my eyes cuz you could see that. But you, we can't roll our eyes from the dais. Can we? Yes, we can. Is it our right to roll our eyes? Do we wanna take on that persona? But honestly, we don't need any help inflaming people who are already inflamed. And at some point, even people who you might align with are gonna be upset at you. And and you, and you can still have that opinion. I have it strongly. You guys have heard me do that myself. But the respect factor, the tender heart, I still have to agree, I have still have to, not agree, I have to listen because that person, even if I completely disagree with where they're coming from and I'm not going to do what they tell me to do, they are someone, they're a human being and they made the effort. And, you know, I, if nothing else, I can just have total blank face. You know, I take notes, so I pay attention better cuz I have a little attention issue sometimes. But, you know, I just try to be as blank-faced as possible. But I have to have it and I have to maintain that tender heart because they're a lot of them, they're a parent. And sometimes they're coming from a place of hurt and and I can have empathy for that, even if I don't agree. And I'm not gonna make the policy change they're asking for. And when we do, we we have done things like, and I've done it myself, I've had both of these chairs and and the pass chair, Misty, you know, say, Katie, you know, because I started to say, I'm like, that's not true. We, we can't, we don't need to be rolling our eyes. We don't need to be turning our back. We don't need to be, you know, we used to get in trouble. My first on the board, you know, our attorney before Paul could get in trouble cuz they thought she was on her phone or whatever and Eric and she was, she was doing what she needed to do to pay attention was she was a doodler, right? But I mean, they're literally criticizing every single thing, but every, that perception, we know we can't control it, but we don't have to do things that will make it worse. You know, when we're on our phones, when we're, you know, having side conversations, when we're walking out of the room, unless we have to go to the bathroom, when we're doing those things. I, it's, it's really hard to sit in the room and just take it, but that is why we get paid the big bucks. We get paid the big bucks, and I'm joking. To to take it and we can control only as much as we can control by policy, my public policy. But I, I I just think, I I'm just, if I can just put anything out there, I I'm committed to continue to move forward to try not to add fuel to the fire by my behavior, by my attitude, by my words, because the fire is already there. I don't wanna squirt a bunch of firestarter on it or whatever you call that stuff by what I might do. Because there's already gonna be the opportunity for misconceptions. I've had my words twisted and turned around so many times. But I don't wanna make it worse by actually saying the things that what people get.
I think coming into this, one of the things that I I really, um, when I'm challenging myself on like, okay, what have I done? Where is my part in this? I think that's very important for us to to look at that. Um, it, number one, do I respect my fellow board members? Like, I I am always trying to, and no matter where we align, politically speaking, I always want to demonstrate respect to each and every one of you, no matter where you're at. I want your voices to be heard. You're important. You guys represent our county. So, respect, I kinda filter everything through the lens of respect. Uh, and then this is probably not a good lens to to look it through, but I'm gonna go ahead and say, would you be re-elected today? But if you ran an election today, would your people still vote for you that voted for you? And if I have to answer those questions and look at that honestly, like, did I show respect and would this, would this have made the people that I represent proud? Um, would they pick me again? Uh, that should be a good time for you to kinda look and say, okay, if not, then what do I need to do? How do I need to change this? And and then the other thing too, and I and I'm gonna work on this this year, is that I'm, I will be intentional about if I am wrong or I have made somebody mad, I am asking you as my board to please hold me accountable in that and come to me and say, hey, I didn't like the way you said blah blah or whatever it was, you know what I mean? And and I will apologize and own it, but let me know. If I'm doing something intentionally, let me know what it is and how I can improve. I think we all should should ask for that feedback. Um, hopefully, it'll be something that you guys will be willing to participate in and and do as well. But ultimately, the better this board is, the better our school system is. Um, if our media is doing nothing but attacking us left and right and we have public that's coming and attacking us left and right, we have to change the narrative and it's our job to do that. And and unfortunately, it's not an easy job and it it may be an impossible job. I don't know. But we better fight for it because if we don't, we hurt our school system. We hurt our kids. Um, we will not be the choice that people pick when it comes to education. So, I'm just, that was the whole objective here with having Kendall come in and say, hey, just tell me what you think. And I know this is, I think about it now, I'm like, that was probably really huge, like, whoa. But she's asking me to come in and tell you what I think about this board. Ooh, that could be a little scary. But I appreciate you coming in and really just kinda going through what you see, how we can improve. I would love a copy of that book. I have not read that book. Uh, everything I I need to, or everything I needed to learn, I learned in kindergarten.
Council says I could do that.
Okay. I would love a copy of that.
I'm gonna make him answer that on the spot.
Just don't give us the golden.
I think that's eighteen eighty-six at this point.
Oh, wow.
But but I I think, Madam Chair, you know what I mean, the 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 point is there. Um, Dr. Rendell has a plan specifically to bring forward a consultant for you guys to revisit your policy, right? The policy is important, but the policy is only the piece of paper if there's not an individual commitment by everyone to follow it and to understand what it means. Um, I'm gonna leave you with this, this simple one. When I was at a recent board meeting, I had a, there was a high school student who said this to me. Um, some of the things that I saw happen tonight would have subjected me to discipline under the discipline policy as a BPS student. And for me, that was probably more clear to me. It mean, some of the ways that you sometimes may address each other, you would not stand for that when you were a principal. And if a student were to speak to a teacher in that way, it would be considered wholly unacceptable. And so, again, we can't legislate that. And so, when I was in your seat, I would remember this one thing. And it was another Jolie Smith thing and I'll leave you with that. You're not gonna get indigestion by swallowing your pride, right? That's, 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 it's an important factor, you know, in your ability to self-regulate as you move through this process, right? Um, it's unfair to ask it from these two gentlemen and the nine thousand people that work for them because they work for you and not vice versa, right? I, I can say things they can't, right? You you can put me out. It's not the same situation or setting as them. And so, yes, I agree with everyone. The good work is happening. And I think, Madam Chair, you asked the question just because we're not going from bad to good. It's going from good to great, right? You, you want the dynamic to be in a place and space and, uh, Matt, you saw it, Misty saw it before you. You become acutely aware of just how it really functions when the gavel is in your hand. Right? Because your other four peers have the ability to sit quietly and wait their turn if they so choose. When you have the gavel in your hand, you don't have that liberty to do so, right? You are the traffic cop with your peers, with the public, you know what I mean, with others. And so, if the board just individually makes the self-commitment of how you will respect and conduct yourself amongst your peers. And and again, Jean, Jean, I would, I would agree with you, you know, I mean, I'm not governed out there by what people think. But to the degree, as Katie said, when you're listening to people at the dais, to the degree that they're right, you know what I mean? It does cause us to appropriately self-reflect on our own self-governance individually, but most importantly, collectively as a board. I don't care who you are, chairman, member, whatever the case is. If it's said about someone else, it applies to you.
That's right.
Because you are only one, right? Politically, you can believe and feel however you like. You can vote however you like. We're not talking about policy being driven in this. We're just talking about personal accountability individually for each of us so that those seventy-one thousand people are going to, seventy-something thousand, I don't know what the number is. Seventy-ish are going to get the best of the best. They're getting it policy-wise, right? But as you said, Madam Chair, there's just some of the tweaking around the edges in the dynamics of how the board functions that you think can get better. So, um, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that, Madam Chair, unless you have other questions for me.
I don't.
You guys have super important work to do.
I I don't know if Paul wants to make any comments or not, but since I wasn't asked, I do wanna make a couple of comments.
I was trying my best to preserve that.
I don't know if it's, uh, I always try to focus on the positive. I always try to focus on the positive and find ways forward. And whenever I'm asked about the board, I always talk about passion. The board members are passionate. You know, each of them represents their constituents. Each of them represents, you know, what they they believe is the most important thing to focus on and that kinda thing. And so, what I see are five people that are passionate, you know, and you know, maybe the passion overtakes the the behavior sometimes. I don't know, but I mean, you know, that's, you know, passionate and involved. And I've been a part of school districts where the board is not passionate and the board is not involved. And in some ways, it's easier for a superintendent and staff to operate under those boards who's pretty much can do what you want. You know, cuz the board may not, maybe not be watching and may not be that, you know, passionate and involved. But we can only do what we do without the support of the board. So the board, I would prefer a passionate and involved board. Because, you know, they're gonna help us shape policy. They're gonna help us make decisions on the, in the best interest of kids, you know, and that kinda thing. It is kind of a dual client. You know, I've kinda come to call them clients now, not customers. A dual client relationship. The kids are our clients, but, you know, they don't make all the decisions for themselves. The parents are, you know, so the family really is the client, you know, and so, um, but student achievement is the number one priority. So, all of our decisions should be geared towards that, you know, and they need to be safe so they can concentrate on learning. And it's not just physical safety, it's also emotional safety. You know, so all those things go into play. And, you know, so when we were talking about very early on in this hour about the, just the adjectives to describe the board. And, you know, so when we were talking about very early on in this hour, about the, the adjectives to describe the board, whenever anybody asks me, I always say they're passionate.
Yeah, you, you know, there's, there's three things that you always have to walk away with, I think Dr. Rendell points out all three. It's the voter's choice as to who sits in this room. And just like you're a voter, you've got to assume that the voters are right, whether you agree or disagree with their choice. The voters decided, and once you arrive at this place and space, you have to agree that they're right, that's number one. Number two, you bring up best interest of the child. We may disagree about how to get there, but there's nobody in this room that doesn't place the children as the highest priority, right? And, 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 you know, he, he brings up the word, uh, uh, passion. I don't think there's anyone here that lacks that, right? I mean, I think he makes a great point. If, if you lack that, we would have a whole horse of a completely different color from a disengagement perspective, right? It, it might be overly engaged, and I don't think you've got a problem with that, nobody's trying to manage the district every day. You're, you're focused where you need to focus. Madam Chair, and again, I think it was just about the, the tweaking of the good to great in the dynamic is what you, you, at least when you and I talked, you felt more about in, in sitting in the chairmanship, and you can feel it more acutely relative to that. And just those little tweaks can get you to an even better place, right? The performance by the metrics by which you are judged show that this district is doing a good job, right? The, the, the metrics prove that out. You've also been aware of districts where student performance is a problem, right? You have a situation where you are doing great work on the ground, you know what I mean, with the children. We're just narrowing down to have a more detailed discussion about what we're doing well? How can we just do that a little bit better? And, uh, every person's personal commitment to that is something I think gets you there.
Yeah.
I, um, I know that this wasn't like the point of Kendall, but because it's been brought up in discussion, we're kind of moving forward into vision and goals too. I just, just for something for people to chew on to, and like, we're just thinking out loud and brainstorming and kind of being introspective, but I want us to think about too, like, they're not, they're not just our clients, they're not just customers. Really, they're partners, every single one of them, and our community is partners, even people who aren't parents, and they always were, right? And this political climate has like, made us have to like, make them business partners, or clients, or customers, and all this stuff. And like, in reality, we know that they have to be partners, because we can't function without any one of those people, and they can't function without us either. Um, and so I think like, we need to maybe think about that while we're thinking about our vision and goals too. Because regardless of what's going on in the boardroom, or going on in the media and around us, if that's how we're operating and focusing as a district, that's, that's what's going to transcend inside of those buildings and those classrooms. And the community. And the business partners that are making phone calls to people.
Does anybody else have anything else they would like to add?
Nope.
All right, I think we're, Paul, do you want to chime in?
He's a lawyer.
He's a lawyer, he's, yeah.
He's got his higher speech down.
With all due respect to the lawyers, everybody hastens until they need one.
That's right, that is right. Lena, we were supposed to pack at ten, is that correct?
She said we could pack whenever you took your break.
Whenever, okay, so then I'll go ahead and we'll, I, I'm guessing we're going to need to recess this to go pack, is that correct? Because we're not going to be videoing, so, okay. So I will call us into recess, and we will let Mr. Moore. Thank you, thank you, we are back in session. So, I, um, appreciate you guys coming this morning, and I, I told you already that, you know, Matt started this last year, and I really think it's a good idea for us as a board to sit together and decide, what do we want to focus on these next? Well, it's not, not twelve months unfortunately, but the next, next eleven months that we have. Um, if anybody has initiatives, and I'm just going to kind of, I, I think it's a discussion topic. So, let's go around the room and say, hey, in the next twelve months, eleven months, I would like to see XYZ across the finish line, just so that we have clear direction and, um, maybe good ideas for moving us forward. Does anybody want to jump out first?
I, this is probably not, I don't know, whatever, I want to say anyway, it's probably lofty. But I would like us to dive into pre-K a little bit, and kind of do a deep dive into, number one, where are all of them? Do we have them, is there a place where we need them? Is there kind of like a desert for it in that community that isn't giving adequate pre-K services, where we can maybe improve and increase in those neighborhoods? And/or where are we placing our pre-K E S D classrooms as well? Um, because there is like, it's, they're not, they're always placed at the same schools over and over again.
Right.
Um, which is not always a benefit to those students, uh, to the perception of that school. Um, they don't always have the same kind of access to community support and resources that they might benefit from if they were somewhere else. I don't know, I just think it would be important. Like I've said previously in our, our conversation about how can we think about improving BPS to make it more enticing or to keep kids in public school, my opinion is if we start young, and you're in BPS and you're satisfied, you're less likely to leave, right? Um, and so, if we can improve those services from, you know, three, four, five-year-olds with families, no, number one, it saves us money in the long run, um, if we're improving those experiences for those kids and, and closing the gap. But, um, it also will entice parents to stay and/or access those pre-K services. Because it's really tough to get your kid into a daycare and into a pre-K, uh, let alone one you feel really comfortable about or really good about. Because some of them are scary.
Yeah.
And very inadequate, I mean, when it comes to educating, some of them are not, some of them are not great.
Yeah.
And then they come to us as kindergartners, and they're way behind.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's a great initiative to look into. Um, with our Thrive by Five program, I'm just, I have a quick question, and I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but if not, maybe looking into it. Um, obviously, we're tracking the births that are happening in Brevard County, which should in turn give us some data to be able to track our potential pre-K students. So, um, uh, you know, we're pretty close to capacity as far as enrollment goes. I've sat through with, uh, with that team just recently. And so, I guess we're going to have to look and see, where is the biggest need? Um, and then if, maybe we need to look at a marketing campaign to our potential incoming pre-Kers to say, hey, we have vacancies. I think there's only a few spots that there's vacancies.
Right, so it's my understanding that we are full. And so, the question is, is there a need for more? There probably is. But how, how do we expand, where do we place additional pre-K units?
Yeah.
And how do we pay for them?
Right.
Yeah, because the state only pays for a half-day.
Correct.
If we pick up the cost.
Right.
Correct, so, it's like, we know the needs there, and, you know, but if it's something, you know, the board wants us to pursue, like, I, obviously, if there's enough interest, we'll come back with some data, show you guys where we have all of them, how long they've been at these locations, you know, do we have other areas where we think they could be placed that would be a benefit? And then how much that would cost?
Okay.
So, one of the, one of the things that I thought about, and I don't know if, if I went into this last time we brought this up, but like, when we, when we got that presentation about students that are leaving for charter schools and privates, obviously, if we were to consider this, it would, you'd want to start small first before you do it everywhere, right? And so, one of the things I was thinking about was if we did it in the, the, the feeder of like Stone to Palm Bay High, because of how many students were, we had all this access to CTE programs at Palm Bay High, if you remember, but they were being the least utilized, and they had the most students leaving those schools and going to charters. Because, again, obviously, because they're not too far from those charters as well. But if we focused on those two to three elementary schools that are right there, those communities, I know from experience, because I had to serve in the BPKs there, but it's been a couple of years, so, doing an actual study of what's going on in that neighborhood would be important. Um, they seriously lack childcare, good quality childcare, they lack pre-K services. They host a lot of our E S C pre-K services. So, in the long run, even though it technically would be money out of our pocket, the state doesn't cover it, it does pay off the benefits later on. They need less E S C services, they need less intervention, and the kids typically will perform better. And hopefully, in, you know, five to six years, if they're having those good experiences and performing well, they're going to stay for middle school and high school.
Yeah, it even could be, we could maybe place them at a couple of our under-enrolled elementary schools.
Right.
That are competing with charters, maybe in the South End, you know.
Yeah.
If those elementary schools had pre-Ks, then the kids could start there, and they'd say, you know what, I'm comfortable here, I'm going to stay here.
And we don't, I, I always wondered why we always had to stay with a full-time, because there are some families, my family included, that only wanted a half-day. So I wouldn't have even looked at the opportunity, and we wouldn't have qualified for, um, for, you know, like Head Start or for E S C. Well, my youngest would have, but, you know, I, I wanted the small half-day. So, I mean, if we passed it.
But now we can use the little vans.
But do we do transportation for the BPK?
We do. Yeah, that's, that's why we have a full day, because it makes it difficult for transportation. But we don't do aftercare.
Yeah. But I mean, there's maybe an opportunity, if it's not a transportation issue, to.
Now, some of our E S C ones though, they don't come every day. But I think that's because, like, that's a question that, that student services would have to explain why, why it's different.
I mean, I think, I am sure that.
They do like three days a week.
The elementary programs, people would love to discuss this. And, because we had this conversation like, in late November, early December, about how many pre-Ks we have, and whether we should try to expand, who pays for it, where do we put, we kind of had that in, in our, in our discussion. They would, uh, I'm sure want to explore that.
Okay.
The other thing too is, like, like the, um, the CTE programs at Satellite and Palm Bay, I know we closed some of them, but when we were doing the teaching program, the pre-K program there, those aren't full-time. I don't think they are.
If you come in for the, like, the.
They have like a weird schedule, like, they weren't our schedule either.
The one at Palm Bay High, the, the parents come pick them up around.
Yeah, and they, they're not, they weren't there always, like, there was testing weeks that they weren't there. So there is weird loopholes, yeah.
So, when I spoke to the facilities guys, because we all had to sit down and talk to them about, you know what I mean, what our needs are and stuff like that, this was a huge area of focus, and, um, there's a couple of, there's a, what you're, what I'm hearing everybody here say is, is there's like, uh, two dynamics is, one, we don't make enough money off the program, because, you know what I mean, we have to fund portions of it. But there is another option for the Vieira kind of families, that we would just say, look, if you would like your child to be here a full day, would you like to pay it? And I think that that would be a huge win, um, when we talk about our competitiveness towards the charter schools. And let me explain why is, is that many of the kids that go into some of those like Vieira academies and stuff like that, they pay full. And they pay full because they want to pay full because of the opportunity. There, there is no doubt that our blue ribbon schools can compete, if not are better than the charter schools in the area. So if they take those pre-Ks, we charge them full amount and open it up. My argument was, is to ask Dr. Rendell, through my meeting with them, to find out the facilities' needs. Because some of our schools in that area have a large component of, you know, their capacities there. But we've seen some open availability options where we might be able to put two or three of those pre-K school classrooms in there and get innovative. So, when we go to do that, Dr. Rendell, if we can not only remember, because I do agree with the sentiment of trying to grab the kids for that, it's an overall plan, but the, and there's statistics out there that talk about, if you create a good pre-K program, they, they do go through. Um, the argument is, is don't forget about the others that would pay full to create that. And I think that we would do a great job, and there's a, there's a, um, opportunity there not to forget, that's all.
So, the only thing that we might find a problem with is equity. Like, if we, I don't think we can do that at, like, one and not do it at all. If we do like a half-day versus a full day, and you pay the difference like, like community daycares do or BPKs do, that might be an issue. But we might be able to get away with it if it's a special program.
Well, or it's Title One, the school, the Title One school, or, you know what I mean, there might be ways to work around that.
And again, I've brought this up a million times, I am just curious, like, what, what is the E S C revenue for some of these pre-K students? And does it go directly back to those programs in those schools? Um, and I had that conversation with facilities too, because some of the schools I'm thinking about, like, I mean, it's my district, so like, some of them house other E S C programs for the higher grades, right? Like the, um, V E B unit in that school. So could we move that V E B unit out of that school and make room for more pre-K? Because that, that community definitely needs more pre-K instead. So there's, there's shifts and stuff that definitely.
So you're talking about doing like a, almost like the from-to studies, like, do we?
Right.
Have a good beat on where all those students are coming from.
And see the impact, right? Because those are, like, those are where, I mean, they're not the only place where our kids are struggling, but we know, we can see some serious growth in data trends from that group. But it also then kind of plays off of the, we're trying to keep kids in BPS, and we're trying to keep them from going to charters and privates. And, and ultimately, that Stone Palm Bay was one of the most significant ones, it wasn't the only one. But it was, I feel like, I'd have to look at it again, but I feel like when we were looking at it, there wasn't, there wasn't too many feeder trends, but that one seemed pretty obvious.
Well, that, in the secondary, it was. There were a couple, um, pockets of elementary low enrollment, some in the South, some in the North now, with South Lake opening. That pulled a bunch of enrollment from the other elementaries there, so, you know. But at those elementaries, if they're under-enrolled, that means they possibly have space. If they have space, you already have possibly the right type of facility for a pre-K.
Which is like what we did at University Park a couple of years ago, when we shut that, we had that one ancillary facility that only had two, uh, pre-Ks in it, and we closed that down. It was a Head Start, it had, uh, Head Start classes, and we moved those to U P because they had room, and it helped fill their building, and it was more efficient.
Yeah, and then, and for those under-enrolled elementaries, it, it could be a way to capture more enrollment. You know, kid, families could choose that for their pre-K, not knowing if they're going to choose that school.
Right.
For kindergarten and on up, and then they might say, you know what, had a great experience here, it's going to keep pretty much kids here.
I already know the school.
Yeah.
The long-term effects of this too can be huge, I mean, it's speculative, but it could be huge. Like, again, when you get parents engaged in the school as soon as possible, you're more likely to keep them engaged. And these are areas, obviously, where we're struggling with that too. So, I'm wondering too about, obviously, we'd have to look into this, but like, I mean, especially in that area, we've got FIT, we've got Eastern Florida State that might consider some, some type of programmatic sponsorship. Um, especially Eastern Florida State, because they used to have their pre-K programs in the Melbourne campus, um, where they service kids. So they might want to think about rejuvenating some kind of program too that could help support. Um, if we work collaboratively with them, they might be open to it. FIT is really huge for that feeder too.
You know, some of the district charter sys, um, situations where you're creating a district charter pre-K system that gets outside of the rules and regulations of what we were, you know what I mean, it might be a dynamic way to do it too.
Well, I was at a district years ago that, you know, they had an under-enrolled elementary school, so they closed it and rezoned those kids, and then opened it up as a pre-K center.
That's what I, I talked about with Dr. Melis, about like Sea Park, a lot of times, we would have conversations about Sea Park. And I'm like, why can't we have like a really amazing, you know, pre-K E S D program there?
Still being in that sixty-something-year-old building.
Well, I know, I know that was the only issue, but just capacity.
Sixty-five now, during sixty-year, I got on the board.
I know.
Yeah, I like, I think it's a good idea, I do.
We tear it down and then build.
Let's get through the current building.
But anyways, I know, like, you can't like approve it with a checkmark or anything, but I just wanted to know if people are okay with, with Dr. Rendell and staff kind of just exploring what that looks like. Because I just said it to the facilities people, but like, they're only going to say so much when they come back, because they have, they have everybody's opinions of what we need to do on there too, and it's just, it could be totally different, totally different project.
I would be curious to see too, what the, the data is on how many of our kindergarten students are coming to us, um, having gone through VPK? And not, uh, I think that's probably very valuable to know.
And which, and our BPKs versus priv, privates versus, and it's different, because every private program is very different. And then the ones that our kids did at first, that was in Melbourne was.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, they're all different.
Yeah.
They're all wildly different, which is the problem, right? Because then they come into kindergarten, and you've got a kid who's never seen a book, and you've got a kid who can start, you know, saying.
Knows every sight word, knows some of it, yeah.
And it's, and it's really tough to close that gap.
No, I think it's a great idea.
I'm also, let me think, no, I'm sorry.
I know, we're.
Dr. Rendell, if, um, if part of that is, I think, if we want to create the consistency through the last couple of years, we've created this, there was a big initiative that we were pushing for prior to the new rule, which was that pre-K through three, you know what I mean, initiative. And I think one of the things that we've done is, is some great strides into that area. Um, but I would, I would caution, just to make sure with our staff, that it's part of, whatever we're expanding to do is also part of the curriculum thread or vertical integration between programs, right?
Well, yeah, a lot of that works with the Early Learning Coalition. And so, if we're going to expand into pre-K, that could be competition for some of our product providers. And so, we just need to make sure that if we're expanding our pre-K, there's a need that's not being met, or we see, you know, an advantage where maybe, you know, because at the, one of the Early Learning Coalition meetings I went to, they did talk about, they're having a struggle staffing.
Staffing.
And so, you know.
Well, they pay very differently.
Right.
Right. It, it could be that, you know, if we get, expand our, um, pre-K offerings, then would we not have as much of a challenge, because we probably pay more and that kind of thing? And so, you know, those kids might actually get better instruction, you know, so.
We also have the, I, I guess if you do do this data drive, um, like VPK assessments, that I think is published by the state from the facility that they're coming from. So if we're looking at a little nestled area, we can see where those kids in those community schools, how they're scoring on their VPK assessment versus the ones that are inside of Brevard Public Schools.
We can see that in the charter drop when they hit our schools also.
Yeah.
There's a lot there.
For kindergarten readiness.
I just, one of the things that we looked at, that, um, neighboring district was doing, was allowing, in the cases of, look, we, you know, innovatively, they allow some of those private providers to come in and provide that pre-K service. Private providers to come in and provide that pre K service inside of the school, so there's a continuity and we kind of work with them. So they feel like they're still a part of it, they still have their opportunities and stuff like that, but at the same time. You know, so there's just all kinds of stuff in there. I've seen that too.
I like it. Alright.
So I feel like I've got plenty of positive feedback to to do a. Data dive, but even more than that, a presentation, you know, workshop presentation about, here's where we are. Here's where we see a possible need, here's what it would cost and, you know, where the possible locations are, what considerations there would be, cause again. The early learning team would know a lot more than than what I do.
And like Mr. Brian came and spoke. I haven't even looked at it yet, um but he, like when he spoke, and I'm just, obviously this is accurate, but I trust him. Yeah, he did work for NASA, but. When he was talking about how in that community, cause some of that community would be touched with with that area. The percentage of how many of those kids don't go to daycare or VPK at all, cause you don't have to go to VPK too, so that's the other thing too, it's it's offering. School where some parents may not ever have chosen that option in the first place.
Well, and I don't know how it is now in comparison to how it was when my kids went to VPK, cause it's been so many years, but. I remember as a parent, it being very hard to navigate that system and learn, like figure out how, how do I even.
Might be twenty minutes away from the school you're actually.
It was very difficult, so if there's a way that we're able to, you know, with that data that we grabbed from that five by five and and kind of do. This is how you do it and just kind of send postcards or something, I think we would probably see an uptick in enrollment too.
Yeah, and like, like you're very educated and you were looking for some information.
It was not easy.
Yeah.
I know, so I like it. Alright, so Jennifer, this next year, your your initiative or your interest is that that pre K deep dive.
I mean, I would like it, I mean, I don't, I don't mind like kind of spearheading and holding the conversation together, but I mean, I think. This is like a big thing that like I think the board has to be a part of and agree to, I mean, this isn't something I can just do on my own by any means, but. I don't mind like checking in and recapping and.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good one. I think it could pay huge dividends to to our students and to the county.
And I think the principals in those elementary schools would be like, yes.
Kindergarten teachers would be very happy.
Yes, yes. When I was, when I went to THS and I, you were the principal at the time, we used to have a program where, I I don't know if it was VPK. Looking back on it now, I don't know that even VPK even existed at that point, I'm not sure, but.
One of our schools that had a parent.
Early child, well, no.
We had.
When we, when we were there, we didn't have the teenage parent program there. We had early childhood education through EFSE dual enrollment program, so we had a daycare on campus, preschool on campus and. So our students were getting their certification.
Yes.
You know, and they have one at a galley, which also had a teenage parent program. So theoretically, if you were a student there and you had a child, your, your child could go there and then even when they. Depending on how long you were at school, they might be in the daycare. Anyway, and so we've had site, those sites around the, around the district.
Yeah, I think it was, I just remember it being a very beneficial course that offered to the students that were the high schoolers.
But the thing is, like, I don't even know if we have a program like that at Bayside, but if we had a program at Bayside or if we don't. If you were to offer, you know, a pre K program at Westside, then you're theoretically, the high school kids could staff that.
Right.
Anyway, we could look at.
Yeah, just a thought as far as, yeah, right, okay. Alright, I like it. Um anybody else want to go next on? On their vision or goal or thing that they would like to accomplish this next eleven months?
For me, I think it's just going to be that we focus on that pre K through three initiative, make sure it gets tightened up and make sure that our achievement levels get there. It's something carryover from last year, everything that we had that I was interested in making, you know what I mean, as an initiative last year happened. So we've got a lot of wins in that department, but the thing is, is that I think that this is one that, you know, is very important. And I think that that's part of our thing, so that's where I'll be focused in the support, you know, in some of those areas, but that's, that's what I feel like.
I like it.
Which is in line with what you were trying to get accomplished last year.
Yeah, I know the K through three rating levels are, was something that was on my list last year that didn't, didn't fully get completed. But it's, that's a work in progress and we're going to continually touch that, so um and make sure that we're looking at it and it's getting better, but.
And honestly, it's just, it it is kind of impossible to kind of like tackle the three if you don't tackle the K.
Right.
And you can't tackle the K if you don't tackle the pre K, cause those kids are so wildly different when they come in, it's crazy. I always said like, you could not pay me enough money to be a kindergarten teacher, because the difference, differentiation in that classroom is just like nonstop.
I think it's alarming to me when I go to those classrooms, I always ask like, how many did you have come to you that were not potty trained?
Yeah, well, and then the social skills and the and the functioning skills, yeah.
And I'm like, how do you handle that in the classroom? You start talking to them and you're going, oh my goodness, like I, it is a lot, so.
There's some states where kindergarten is not required.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our experience with our youngest, we did Montessori. She could read before she got to kindergarten, but when she came to Bervard's kindergarten, they.
They were doing the alphabet.
And they, you know, we were like, why are you doing Denalian? They don't teach Denalian in any pre K. So the teachers were telling her she didn't know her letters and she didn't know how to read. And we're like, she reads to us every night, she reads us books, she knows her letters. It's like in the, we don't understand what's going on and they show us this Denalian stuff, it's almost cursive. She hadn't recognized those because they're weird.
Yeah.
So that was more of a BPS curriculum experience we had where it frustrated us and she has not bounced back yet. She kind of got discouraged.
I would say it's, it's the emotional part of it.
Yeah, I think she got humiliated, cause they were telling her she didn't know how to read and she didn't know her letters and they're sending stuff home that she's.
What grade is she in now?
Uh second.
Okay, yeah.
When it's like, no. Chapter books.
Yeah.
When in kid, when she got to kindergarten, she was like Princess Kitty books and stuff. Then it's like, because now she's getting introduced to this Denalian and they said, oh yeah, it's required of all of our kindergarten kids, they're like, I've been. We were in Marion, they did Montessori, no problem.
Is that a state requirement?
Denalian in Marion, I don't understand why.
Why, I was gonna say that.
Kindergarteners to know how to recognize.
That was one of those pendulum swings of.
No one can write cursive to.
This is probably sending back to you, they don't teach cursive in school. So how many times I have to say, yes, we do. You're just how forced to use it.
That's probably worth looking at though, because honestly, I don't.
It's some weird spec, like specific thing that nobody feels comfortable to complain about. That's like really important.
Yeah, all like pre Ks are teaching kids regular alphabet letters and they come to kindergarten and all of a sudden A is this weird.
Yeah, it's, they're like, what?
It's a U.
It's a tail.
Yeah, yeah, that's really, that's something, wow. Alright, um lots of focus on our, on our littles. Alright, Jean, do you got anything this coming year that you're like, hey, I really hope we can get this across the finish line this year?
Well, obviously nothing's as important as us kids reading.
Obviously, yeah.
And and it's funny, I, it's encouraging, a year goes by, the list that we had.
Oh.
Last year versus versus now. So I've, probably minor things compared to what some people are thinking, but, you know, and I know we're doing this, but I just want to make an emphasis on. Our CTE programs, do they fit the needs of our community wherever these CTE programs are housed? I know Matt's talked about it.
No, it's no problem.
Talked about it, but um where are we at on that? And and that's like, that's something that's continuing and and also if if a CTE program. Just isn't working, we've got to be willing to say, mate, it's time to move on past it.
Yeah.
What, what can we fill that in um with, you know, it's okay. When I was like president of the church before, that was the last thing you did was, you know, down a, a committee and not, and not use it anymore. You know, that it's, it's past its prime, it's past its need, maybe we have some programs out there that we could better use. Our, our resources, but that, that's a big one. Um so I got a couple little ones. The other one is, you know, this fast data. It's, it's great to have it, but if we, if we're not utilizing it to its maximum possibility. And then, and then it's like not, we don't need it. So our teachers using the data. The most effectively, and if not, you know, do we need to establish some training on using that data? Because in the classroom, I know when there was ever a new initiative, it's all great and it's all shiny new and everything, but, you know, a lot of teachers just. Well, I don't use it anyway, you know, it's just certain things, but it's important that we are utilizing that data. And and is it, and those that are doing it, is it, is it paying dividends, is it working?
I know we do it at the district level, but you're talking about in the classroom specifically.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's a good question, cause theoretically we have more data available now than we've ever had. Because it's formative assessment, right, directly, but it's really summative assessment.
Hasn't it been delayed or am I wrong, missing, like messing that up with something? I feel like there was something that was like. By the time the other assessment was coming.
Sure, yeah, well, the first time, the first experience with PM one, progress monitoring one, fall of last school year.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't get the results nearly as fast as they promised, but PM two, they came within a week.
Oh, okay.
PM three, they came, I think, within a week, cause those are final grades for some classes and so. But it's a good question, you know, are we taking a look at the data, are teachers using the data?
Our teachers using.
To change their instruction, are we showing them how to do this, you know?
Are we giving them the room to do that?
Right, the time to do it, the room, the room and the scope and sequence to go back and reteach something that, no, I gotta stay on schedule.
I gotta stay on my pacing guide, right.
Well, and so, go ahead, cause I, that reminds me of what mine is, what one of mine is.
But I think, you know, it's a valid question, because, you know, we were bombarded at the early part of the year. By a lot of parents that, you know, their elementary kids seem to be taking tests every day.
Yeah, that was.
And we were taking PM one, and then we were doing I Ready, and then we were doing something else, and you know, so. Probably a good conversation to have, maybe a presentation again from the elementary team and then. All the way up through secondary, because we do, you know, we use PM one, two and three all the way through tenth grade, so. You know.
The maths testing, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I feel more confident in the math data previously that, you know, we, you know, we were making good use of the math data. But um.
I think that's easier though to like go back and reteach.
Yeah.
It's just a lot easier to.
I agree.
To catch up or to go back, right.
Yeah, I mean, even if it wasn't our idea to do PM one, two and three, it's a state, you know, thing. We're doing it and we're spending the time on it, so it's a good question, you know, do teachers use the data? And if they, if they aren't using the data, is it because we haven't shown them how?
Right.
Or we're not giving them room in the scope and sequence to go back and reteach? Cause they gotta stay on schedule.
Yeah.
But, you know, and you hear that a lot, but is that the majority or or a vocal minority, so.
Then leads me to our Bervard testing, if if this fast is working.
Why is your list looks similar to mine?
I get some of the same emails.
Yeah, we must.
But it's, then you know where I'm going with that. And what can we reduce? What can we take away? You know, we, we know as, as teachers and parents, you know, you're not learning while you're testing. That's, that's when we're assessing, so, you know, I've had, I've had teachers just say, I feel like I'm a professional proctor. Please, you know, they're, they're all good in in and of itself, but when they're, when it's every week we're doing something. Can you look into it?
Yeah, so the conversation we had um in cabinet about this earlier in the year, when we were getting barraged with all those. Concerns about too much testing was, you know, is I Ready testing or is it not? Is it diagnostic? Is it really an instructional tool? And the attraction to I Ready is that not only is it a diagnostic, which tool. You know, to assess your students' progress at that point or knowledge or comprehension or skill base at that point. It then follows up with instruction.
Right.
And, you know, elementary teachers do use it as part of their rotation when they do centers, you know. I'm going to take a small group and work with them individually, this group's going to do silent reading on this and this group's going to do their I Ready, so.
And it produces ready, with a teacher toolbox, it produces ready made materials. So the teacher, if they're using the data, I can say, I'm pulling all these kids in that had problems with fractions. And I already just gave me a lesson for all the kids that were scored on this on fractions and I don't have to come up with my own. You know, I've got it ready made here too with the toolbox.
Part of the conversation is, teachers have gotten used to using I Ready as a tool. That maybe they're not used to the fast data yet, like do, do they, do they trust the fast data? Especially when the fast data like at PM one is comprehensive, it's, it's the whole year's worth of. Of, you know, standards, so you're taking, you know, basically your final exam in PM one. You know, that's, it's not a progressive tactic, I can't think of the word for it, but anyway. So do we at some point wean ourselves from I Ready and just use PM one, two and three? Because we have to do PM one, two and three, or is I Ready still so valuable that we don't want to lose it?
I think part of it too is like, this is the first year and, you know, most of these seasoned teachers have seen continuous changes, so there's always like. Was this gonna be gone next year, right? So they don't invest the time and energy into it right now, cause they don't trust that it's going to be a beneficial tool. I have a question though about I Ready, are we, is, is anyone using those grades as like? Like real holistic punitive grades?
I don't believe so, but I mean.
Like they're only just using it for, for assessment and modeling.
I wouldn't believe that, but.
I would check on that to see.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we can.
And the other thing too is um like what Jean said about like all of the Bervard testing. I think what, it's not the whole issue, but one of the issues too is. I feel like a lot of times administrators are just like teachers, it's just a culture of education where everyone's always fearful that someone's watching them and they're going to get in trouble for not doing their job. And so I think because of this confusion in the new PM stuff, there are administrators who are waiting for like. The fifth time being told, it's okay, you don't have to have this additional piece of data. Um because I feel like, at least that's what I'm hearing, um there are some schools that are being a little bit more intense about that. Um because they're scared how they're going to be evaluated on the other end, right?
I can take that back and share that.
And I'm not saying that's everyone, but.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it's obviously, we need to be aware of that, that there may be that perception out there that, you know. I got a hundred percent of my kids through PM two.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna keep pulling these kids out that were absent, so they can take their PM assessment and. Now you're pulling them away from instruction and they just missed instruction because they were absent, is that PM two assessment really worth it?
Yeah, I think that, that testing thing is one of the things I, I constantly hear, I hear it from students, I hear it from teachers, I hear it from principals. We test all the time, we turn around and take another test and another test and another test, and it's just like, there's no opportunity to really teach in the classroom. Because they're just focusing on getting these kids ready for a test, so I think that taking a deep dive into what is Bervard specific versus state mandated.
Yeah.
And maybe pulling back and saying, hey, let's take away all these Bervard things that we're doing that are making it more difficult for our teachers to be able to teach. Um I think that would be a good thing that we should look at. Uh and then once we master it and we're doing great, then we can add some other stuff on there if we need to, but right now, I think they're just, they're inundated with.
But I would wanna give, because I would wanna give people a chance to fight for certain things.
Yep.
Because, and I.
If they're being like utilized, they may be using it for.
I use I Ready as an example, because there are some things that because we have I Ready. One thing, the state can just up and redo their contract anytime, Renaissance is here for right now, but what if it's, and then you, you lose that linear. Um traction that you have, you know, because we had one consistent thing that even if, like, because even when the state was shifting to fast. We, we had the consistency of I Ready, so we could really tell year over year what probably, we didn't have to wait for them to catch up this year that they're doing, so. And, you know, we talked about dyslexia and one of the tools that Dr. Bias told me that we have, that we can utilize with I Ready. Is there is a dyslexia screener that's part of what we're already paying for, um we had to get people trained on it, I don't know if we're doing it yet, but that, cause that was back in the early fall. Um so there's some tools that come with that, so I, I want them to fight for it, you know, I don't want to just do.
I think, I'm just saying, as long as if it's.
Everything needs to be on the chopping table or, you know, on the cutting table.
Or using it as an instructional tool and not, not necessarily a testing mechanism, I think is, is more so. Right, right, so I think it's, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying getting rid of I Ready, that's not at all what I'm saying, but I'm saying there's, there are other things that.
Problem is, there are some principles that came up under a, let's test all the time. So even if we give them the opportunity to say, look, this is just an optional thing. They, boom, and I'll be honest with you, the K through three instructional that's going on right now is creating a lot of our social emotional. Problems with kids going into school, it's causing a serious depression among some of the kids and it's all test based and everything else.
Yeah, well, PM one was, is, is a good example of that.
I know.
Cause we didn't, we didn't have PM one before. And so last year was our first experience, last school year was our first experience with it. And again, it was a comprehensive test, so kids who usually score four or five on FCAT and other assessments, FSA. They scored a two or a three and they're like, oh my god, what happened?
Yeah.
You don't know the year's worth of material yet.
I wish like we were legally allowed to not tell them that score. Fifth grade and under are not allowed to know what PM one is.
And if you know what it meant, it actually can, can really be positive.
Should have been at that point in the year, rather than measuring you where you should be at the end of the year. We shouldn't, they, they should have not done it that way with the head, you have to add the disclaimer, like, no, no, compare you to other beginning of the year fifth graders. You know, not compare you to where you're supposed to be. Beginning of the year fifth graders, you know, not compare you to where you're supposed to be.
Right, first time we have.
It's the first time, I know, so it'll get.
But it's nice enough if you have, say, twenty percent, you know, twenty percent of the year.
Like, alright, good, it's day one, you already know twenty percent, good job, yeah.
A lot of lawyers would say, whoa, I don't have to learn anything the rest of the year, I'm already.
Yeah, I'm like, that's, that's the danger, you get the kids that are like. Do you have anything else on your list, Jean?
Well, there's lots, but this year, since we already had to let the consultant come in and ask us a lot about the long term. Of what BPS is, could look like, I'm, I'm really anxious and curious and looking forward to those discussions. Overcrowding, undercrowding, reutilized buildings. Make sure some people find those uncomfortable conversations, but that's, that's why we're here is to. See how we're gonna be as a district twenty years from now that maybe we had something to do with that.
If I, if I may, Dr. Rundell, one of the things that I've noticed, just because now I've been on the board for a while. Many of the things, and Ms. Campbell will probably say the same thing, many of the things that we have are reoccurring, right? Like, we had this whole discussion and one of the reasons Misty Belford was elected. Was because she was against Gardendale being closed and all that other stuff, that whole wind, that whole piece that came in there that was part, you know what I mean? There was all of that going on. But every time we come up to coming into a situation, whether it's pre-K through three, whether it's. Opening or closing schools, or whether it's healthcare or whatever, there's no sustainable matrix, right? Like, so we come up with this huge thing, like, we've gotta figure out how we're gonna deal with capacity and all that stuff, and then it disappears. But there's no like sustainable measurable met- metrics like our top five claimants in healthcare. What are we doing to fix them, what is the communication and all that stuff? When we have these large ones, what is it, and then recording it, and then putting it into something as a review for every three years, is what I'm getting at. So we like only deal with the situations when they become a flare point, right? But if the communication has gone out that, hey, in three years, we're gonna be looking at this, let's look at some innovative ideas ahead of it. We're not thrown into a, let's have a workshop and have to make a decision the next day. And it's better for the long term, so when you put together that plan of, these are some of the hot button issues, the other thing I'd like to do. Is some sort of a measured, every three years, we have to come back to this as part of a workshop for discussion on our. You see what I mean? Because that's what we should be doing.
It might need to be more frequent than every three years, I mean, if you think about the composition of a board every three years, it's gonna look drastically different.
Depending on the topic, it's different, but I would say that as we move forward, one of the things to keep an eye out is. Let's look at sustainability of monitoring these issues that keep coming up. And that sustainability, how to monitor it and bring forward a program like, we're good right now, but, and, and facilities does a good job with letting us know about the growth. Right, so there are, as we go through the themes that we're talking about, career and technical. We don't have a program where we evaluate the needs of the community and what we have and are they piped in. It just doesn't happen, career sources over here, EECs over here, so let's work on starting to put that together, that's all, so as we put it together, it'd be good.
I like it. And we need to, we need to come back on, we don't want these things to just die here on this table and nothing else ever happen with it, that's pointless of even.
Cause we, and cause all of a sudden the flare up, every year, we know something's coming. Like, we know that something's gonna come this year that's gonna be dragged out, and then we forget about making sure that consistent, you know, I mean, there's metrics. We know we gotta deal with it, but we just don't have a.
Kind of felt like that's why Sue was having us have all these meetings and words, so the week, as we get ready over the next couple months, this is part of the purpose, right? Are we developing a long-range plan?
Correct, it's actually on the workshop for, to twenty-third, is the presentation from the consultant.
I could be saying though, because like over the past three years, I've, we've had presentations a million times about capacity up and down and stuff, but it's never been. It's presented just as informative, it's never presented as in like, hey, let's fix the problem. So it's just like, hey, just.
Granted, over the last three years, we've had.
Oh, no, I know, I know, but I, but I get what you're saying is like, if, if, it's great to be informative, but if it's not forethought, that it's gonna have to be worked on again then.
I suggest that when we, cause we're gonna start soon crafting that new five-year strategic plan that we put that in there. We make that part of the plan and we do it, like, put it on the, in the plan, on paper, that we're gonna annually look at these five things or something like that. Every two year, whatever. You know, some schedule where we're looking at, there's certain things we look at all the time.
Cause I don't know if you guys look at the leadership team packet that came out yesterday, but we have more frozen schools, like. I've got three elementary schools in the south end that are frozen that have not been frozen before, well, Bayside was one year.
Cause of capacity.
If they're over ninety-five percent, and then we have, the middle school is gonna, is already on the list. The new middle school's already on the list, and we've got Vera and Satellite, they've been on there before. And Bayside, Bayside too, Bayside's not been on there before, so we've got, we've, we've got more frozen schools than any year that I've been on the board. For our ELO options, so.
That's, that's what I would call a quality problem, that means we have a lot of students coming in, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you know, Bayside was two hundred fifty kids over projected enrollment. And that's gotta place us for.
How big is Bayside, how many students does Bayside hold, do you know?
Before Heritage opened, it had like, it had, they had like a portable city out there, they had like twenty-nine hundred kids, so I'm, what it could be.
It's an old Ed Curry question, when you say, what's capacity? Ed Curry's idea of capacity was a lot different than. Cause he would expect you to have your teachers' chair rooms, traveling teachers and all that.
So my grandmother used to say, when there's room in your heart, there's room in your home, and I'm like, not always grandma, you can't have everybody here all the time.
Not if you only have two bathrooms.
Yeah, exactly, same kind of concept. You're good, okay, you have any more, if you have any more?
Just small things, like personal stuff, like we, as, I'm sure we all have the same ideas. You know, take care of low hanging fruit, I really wanna be in the schools a little bit more as far as facilities, building, athletic facilities. You know, if there's, if there's things that have just, not anyone's person's fault, things aren't getting done, but. It's us, then to make a little bit more noted, not calling Sue at midnight saying, you know, fix a basketball hoop. But those, those little things that I think we can readdress and get to the right. Give it the right attention so things get done, because, yeah, I've, I've heard quite a stir over the year of. This could be done in five minutes, why isn't it been taken care of, you know, so, I just wanna do a better job myself of going around and, and. Listening into that a little bit in my schools and, and following it through till it's completed. Something we can do, you know, so, other than that, go ahead.
I'm gonna just jump on one that has, this has been important to me from the beginning and that we, you know, won't ever stop doing. And that is just increasing our volunteers and particularly our mentors. You know, we are going to come, one of the things that we haven't talked about yet, but this is our last year of ESAR, where ESAR will end in this calendar year. And so, addition to what I'm talking about, we're also gonna have the funding drop off, right? What do we do with all those people and programs that we, we've paid for with ESAR and which ones are we gonna roll over into the millage? That'll be a big task for all of us this year, but we've, you know, we've been paying for volunteer fees over the last three years with ESAR. I'd love to see what the impact of that was, you know, if it, if it was more, but you know, as we've, as we're, you know, we've opened, reopened post-COVID. We haven't had, not just the people come in to volunteer, but we haven't had so many opportunities, cause I think some of our schools and teachers got used to doing it without volunteers. Because they had to for all those times, so part of it is on the schools. I don't wanna create more work for the schools, the idea of volunteers coming in is to lighten the load, but there is that initial. You kinda have to let go of some things and find things that volunteers can come in and do, they can shelf books, they can staple papers, they can. You know, sign kids up for whatever, you know, so finding those opportunities and then just really emphasizing that. But I don't want us to let up on our push volunteers that we've done through allowing fingerprinting to be free and, and things like that. I mean, if it's beneficial, maybe we need to find a way to make that continue to be free. If it's not that big of a deal, then, cause, and if, once you, once you do it the first time, it's only eight dollars every year.
As long as you don't let it lapse.
As long as you don't let it lapse, right, and they're pretty good about sending your reminder email, but. You know, I just, and then specifically with mentoring, and I like, I, this is my first year to do TakeStock, but I've done TakeStock this year, but I. Which is great, and I love my little gal that I work with every week, but there's kids who are not in that program. Who wouldn't qualify because maybe they have behavior issues or academic issues that have, that would prevent them. Or their parents didn't apply, or they make too much money, or whatever, but they still need somebody in there, a loving adult, just to cheer them on. And do the same kinda things that TakeStock mentors are trained to do, just encourage them, hey, did you know that FAFSA is opening if they're a senior? Or you should, you know, what do you know about CTE or, or, hey, how are you doing, just encouraging them, you know. Spinals are coming up, you gotta, you know, study strategy, or just listening to what's going on in their lives. And so, you know, we did that drive a couple of years ago, and we have a mentor training program online, I'm not, some schools are doing better than others at. Accessing that and making use of it, you know, cause some of our schools have, you know, forty mentors and some have zero or one. So it's a lot, I, I don't, I always hate to put more work on school staff, but again, the idea eventually is. You know, the only work for me as a TakeStock mentor to commit for, that I put on staff is I walk in the door and they have to do the check. Because they know me, they see me come in every week, you want this room over here, yes, and then there's no more work they have to do, but you, that initial. Setting people up with someone, and, you know, then they have to, you know, there's, TakeStock does all the background check side of it. So somebody has to do that part, but I just, just opening that up more so that we can have people, you know, loving our kids. And being that cheerleader from the side, because that is the piece that some kids are missing, is just that someone's saying, you can do it, keep going, keep going, keep going.
I think it goes to having an actual coordinator at the district.
I literally, I literally wrote that down.
We said it last year.
Yeah, we did.
We wanted to have, because there's, it's not only, it's not only having, you know what I mean, but like what you're saying. Here's, here's what I'm hearing you say is, there are some great engagement and opportunities at the school-based level for our schools and our parents. But every principal that takes over doesn't know possibly what may be working in other places and not working, and it's not their job, and it'd be very difficult. But if we had a co- coordinator that put together the playbook of blueprint, here's how we can engage with our parents and the successes that come behind it.
Kinda like the PIE program.
Right, but specifically for volunteers.
But our schools, they need to hear, you know, if something, if, if a school has an amazing mentor program, like, which one of your? Oh, I was thinking it was Hoover.
Stern has like fifty-five.
Okay, so they've got something going on, given that principal an opportunity to share, hey, this is what we're doing. Because just sometimes you just need the inspiration of someone else doing it.
They, they, they benefit from FIT too, so they have a little advantage, cause they have like, like the, the women's basketball team comes and stuff like that. So they've got like eighteen, fifteen, you know, right there.
There's, and there's, there's so much to build into that space, right? So I would say that that might be something, as you were speaking to the millage, maybe even out of district communications, there's an opportunity there for something. To drive it.
And somebody who would do like, I, I really, the model of the PIE program would be fantastic because.
Yeah, same concept.
When, when Sarah Almond worked for us, I mean, she, like, we were trying to do the five-star award, five-star school, but it was more like data tracking. It was so much work for no benefit, cause all, you could just go saying, we're a five-star, but it really needs to be more of a. Like the PIE program, how do we, how do we up the participation for that partnership, and thank you for saying that word earlier, cause everybody's a partner, right? We need our families to be partners, and our families will feel less, especially nowadays when we have these campuses that are closed off because they have to be. You know, of the way we live, it's, we're not back when you could walk your kid out through the door anymore. But this is a way to open them back up and make our families and our communities feel more part of the schools. So there's all kinds of benefits, but really, just with that, I, I really like that model of the PIE program, and I would be supportive of a district staff coordinator.
It helps ensure equity too, right, so we've got schools that got fifty, fifty mentors and only got schools that have zero. And maybe that's just not a skill set for that principal to, to make that happen in that community, and that's fine, we have someone at the district level that. Can make that connection with the community itself and spread the wealth, like you can drive ten more minutes for me and go to this school instead.
When I go to a church group or a club and I try to talk them into being a volunteer or a mentor, and they're like, well, who do? Like, well, just reach out to the school closest to you, well, that's a really awkward call to do. And if, and I, and I sometimes I've seen them and they're like, I called them, but they were like. If there's a district coordinator, they can say, hey, let me connect you to, and that this school has, if you're not a parent, right, or a grandparent. Do you just like, I, this is my background, I'm a retired, we have a community full of retirees, you know, this, and maybe the vol, the district coordinator. Could be someone who.
Well, and if you remember, last year, the reason that we met at the, at the. At the zoo was because I had them come present, and also part of the presentation is what Health First does. They're the two most successful volunteer programs in the county, and that was one of our pieces was, hey, this is something that we wanted to focus on. As far as, you know, they've been so successful to make in it to where you walk at the zoo and everywhere you turn, there's a volunteer. Like, I've never seen something more successful, and it just turns on working towards it, and I know for a fact, being a part of the Rotary. Rotarians and all of those people would be a great place to fill those Title One un-volunteer areas, because they would support those areas. So having that coordination would work, that's all.
I've tried to have this conversation with some of my Bayside PTAs, who are painting murals all over their schools. Spending like an insane amount of money to paint the walls, which are beautiful and inspiring and great for the kids to see, but I'm like, how about you donate one of those walls? To a school over the bridge, you know, like, just get out and like go see a different, different school and support that school in some way. And that's kinda how I feel about the volunteering, volunteerism too, is like, it's awesome that your school's flooded with PTA members, but can maybe like. Once a month, you guys flood a different school with some PTA love and support them over there.
The other thing, and, and it really relates to some of the conversations we've had about achievement, about. Testing and how we're using the data, and I've had several conversations with Dr. Rundell about it, I want us to revisit the tutoring model. I've sat in a couple sessions now of, now I'm forgetting the company.
Varsity tutors one?
Varsity tutors, and the program that Polk is doing, where it's so individualized and they're doing. Like the teachers are loving it because it's taken some of the weight, and they're actually, they can do some of their small group instruction with a person who's live for that kid. And I know we had the issues with the China, Varsity Tutors has already passed that test. And like I said, Polk, Polk has really done a very unique thing. In that partnership that they've like written the book on it, so we wouldn't even, I mean, we could like, you know, go. That opportunity for kids to get that individualized instruction, and I will tell you, I know we had conversations before about, oh, they're taking our teachers. I, I, I've told Varsity Tutors, I've sat down to them and I said, look, this is what my board had a problem with, one was the China thing, and that was, they were like, no, we're good. And the thing is, they feel like if we're doing this, then we're, we shouldn't be paying our teachers to do that, but every district that I've talked to has the same problem we do. Our teachers don't want, they're so burnt out, they don't even wanna take the money to stay after school or before school and do the extra tutoring. And I see Dr. Rundell shaking his head, and that's universal across the state, but the other thing is, they said, our tutors are, some of them are teachers from other districts. Who are, wanna get the extra money, and so they'll do it after, or they're college students, who are trying to earn some more money. Or they're, you just, you know, retirees, they're university professors, whatever, you know, so they're, so it's not created this competition. You know, I felt much better after I talked to them, but I just, this, because the, the world is going to individualize instruction. The world is going to that, and we see the needs, the way we move the kids along the, the spectrum of progress. Is to find out more and more, this kid needs this help, and a teacher with twenty-two or more kids in their classroom. They can only do so much small group down, and so if they have that, it's just one more tool, it's not the be all end all, but it's one more tool in their toolbox. So I would really like us to take another look at that, how we do the funding for whatever, and we don't have to go whole hog like Polk, but I'm telling you. I, I would like everybody to take a look at it, cause I talked to Dr. Rundell about, let's, let's look at that again, because if there's a way for us to. Use any last bit of ESAR before it goes away to get the initial.
Yeah, and I, I would be curious to see what happened with the, the contract money, cause that was an almost nine hundred thousand, eight hundred and some change. Thousand dollar contract that was trying to get her towards tutoring.
That one had to go away.
Which we would not have been able to use within like thirty days of us buying it had we bought it, so that was a good move, even though it was very controversial at the time.
But I don't want us to like go, we're not doing it at all, I would, I would like, cause because since that time, I, that's when I've sat, since that decision where we decided to not do it. Two times, listing in-depth of what Polk's been doing with Varsity Tutors. And, didn't have to be Varsity, we'll have to, we'll have to do it out through procurement, but the opportunity for that individualized instruction and the way they're using it. Is very unique, except Varsity Tutors is actually writing new stuff to do it, help Polk go on to do it. And I think you've had conversations with.
Yeah, Mrs. Harris was reaching out to Polk, I just need to see where they are, where she is with that.
So anyway, that's the, the idea of just tutoring, the online tutoring, cause, you know, like I said, all our ESAR money's going away, but what are we gonna do? And the model of asking our teachers to work extra and we'll pay you more, that's not working, cause they don't want to, they don't want to.
Can we, I mean, would it stop us from just like, not on paper, but just softly saying to principals, like, you can. you can offer it first to your teachers and just to not have to have that fight? Because I agree with you, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're never gonna fill all those agencies with a teacher.
Some teachers who are taking up.
But you're not gonna fill all, there's no way.
After-school tutoring is already on the menu right now. With ESSR dollars right now. And some schools have teachers that are willing to do it or they're doing Saturday bootcamps, especially when we get close to PM three. You know, they're gonna do Saturday bootcamps that they've done the last couple of years. Um, and a lot of them will do some tutoring or summer school instruction and stuff like that. But we set a lot of ESSR money aside for that and it, it didn't get utilized for that.
Right, now we're having to figure out what are we going to spend it on before it's done because we didn't. And, and there are a lot of schools, like I had some of my Title One schools that were doing things like that pre-COVID. They, they set aside some of their money to do Saturday bootcamps, to, to pull in their teachers to come in on a Saturday and do a three-hour session. Um, some of them even did, like Columbia, I want to say, a year when Rachel Roberts was there, I think they might have even worked out some transportation stuff.
Yeah, well, with Title One money you can. So, and with ESSR you can actually, because we, in our first, very first ESSR grant, we used some of it for transportation. So once you get that approved once, you're gonna be able to keep getting approved.
So those are my two.
Those are your two, okay, good. All right, well, mine, um, several of them have already been said, so I'm, I don't need to rehash them, the, the.
I was like, there's a lot on there.
I know, well, that's why I'm like, well, I'm not gonna, okay, I'm not gonna write, you know, mine was the K three three reading initiative, obviously. The Orton Gillingham teaching to all of those teachers, I think, and, and really hitting that over and over again. Because if this, just the identifying aspect of potential kids that have dyslexia, I think we need to know what that looks like. And I don't know if we're identifying them early enough, uh, if that's part of our reading issue, could be a huge part of it. Um, the other one should not come as a surprise, I've mentioned it multiple times, but this walk-through year-round school. I know we've had this conversation, uh, we had it before and it was not, I understand that there's a lot of questions and a lot of, uh, you know, uncertainties and unknowns. And I, my feelings on this are that I believe this in my heart, that this is the solution to so many of the problems that we have. When it comes to school capacity issues, I believe it, it serves as a purpose there. Back in the, I think it was the eighties or the nineties when this came about. Um, that is the model that southern counties used because they were having capacity issues. Similar to what we are, where people are moving in and great numbers and they couldn't build a school fast enough, they didn't have the funds fast enough. And so they looked at a year-round school model. Um, I think it solves that problem. So I really, I want to keep pursuing that. Um, I think it needs to be spun out to the public in a, in a way, and I know it's already got out there because of conversations that we've had. That is, all the benefits of it, I, I, there are so many benefits of it. So that's my walk is this year's year-round school is what I'm gonna focus on. Collecting as much information data that I possibly can from other states, other even countries that use this. Um, and bringing that back to you guys to show you on all the benefits. I know we talked about this before and it was like, hey, we don't want to take an all-in jump. Um, my concern is this, if we don't take an all-in jump, and I'm just gonna put this on the table. Um, I think that, I think an all-in jump is a very, very bold move. Um, and I think it will pay us some really, really bold dividends. Uh, and I also believe with the state now piloting some money, that they're looking at districts doing this, that this could be where we're headed in ten years anyways. But if we did it at the beginning, this is a recruiting tool. Because I don't know if you guys have put the feelers out or talked to any of your teachers or any of your principals. But if you haven't, when you start getting back into the schools, please, mention it as much as you can, ask them and see what they say. I have not had one single person tell me that they don't want this. They're like, please, bring it here, bring it here, we want it, we want to have it here, please. And so I'm like, this to me, I think, could solve so many of our issues of teachers that are, are on the brink of retiring. They might stay a little longer because they're like, you know what, we could do that, we could do year-round.
Kind of that question, because there's a couple of different models and you talk about capacity. Are you talking about year-round schools, like, like Royal Palm has a year-round calendar? Or are you talking about like a four-track where we have kids?
Ideally, I, it would be one track. But when you're having capacity issues, you could run multiple tracks. And it utilizes your building. Now Sue's probably, I, I know when I said this before, I said, her eye is probably twitching right now because she's going, what in the world, how am I gonna get these projects done? Um, you know, it utilizes the building the entire time, the entire year. So we don't have buildings that are sitting vacant, that's a wa- that's wasteful, why are we even doing that? Um, we, we did a lot this summer, you know, with enrichment camps and that was happening at different schools and that was great. We were using our building, right? That's wonderful. Uh, and I believe we'll see that was very well worth it. But I, I just think it's something for us to walk down and look at. Um, because if we're the first one to do it, we can use it in the right way, that's a recruiting tool. If we're doing it because the state's saying it's what we have to do, then it's not going to be as popular and no one's gonna want to flock to it kind of deal. Um, but I also think it will, will help our students and our achievement issues that we're having right now too, so.
Yeah, this is a brainstorming idea, so it's kind of those, just put everything on the table. I just want, do want to say this in light of our conversation that we had with Kendall earlier is, considering the perception of the board currently, that we're gonna continue to work on with our public, because this is a huge buy-in thing.
It is.
Um, if this board imposes this, or it feels like we're imposing this on our seventy thousand kids, nine thousand employees and, you know, six hundred thousand community, it's not gonna go well. So with all of that in mind, I mean, that slow, slow walk to it, but to get the buy-in, we, we, we have absolutely got to have support of the community.
No, I, I wholeheartedly agree. Um, I, I think that there's a time that a survey can be asked of our parents. I, I think we have to be strategic with all of those things because I, I, uh, you know, right now is probably not the best time, but if you hit them the last week of summer when they're ready to send their kids back, they might be like, please, let's do this. No, teasing, that's a joke. Um, but no, I, I don't, I'm not saying force this upon anybody. I, I think the community is going to be resistant to change, everyone is, they always are. But sometimes change is really, really good. And, and you don't know that until you're on the other side of it. So the uncertainty is what makes everyone kind of, ew, not really like it. Um, but the ability for our family to be able to travel more, because right now they're constrained to being here in Brevard County during these months when school is in. Um, the ability, you know, growing up from a split household, you know, Ms. Jenkins, you had brought this up about the, you know, parents that don't have amicable divorces and, and I, I understand that are amicable parenting agreements. Um, I was fortunate that I had that though, but I'm like, that, that was a tremendous benefit to my family. Because I'm like, I got to spend time with a parent that was outstate, which I wouldn't have otherwise. Um, you know, you just, I think we could also have intervention time on those weeks when they're out. And we're not waiting an entire year to say, okay, this student is struggling and now we're gonna put them in a summer school, great. And hopefully we're gonna catch them up. But I'm like, now we can identify this in a shorter period. And then when they're on break, give them the option to be able to come in and do some intervention work and some, basically not summer school, but, you know, school on break, uh, to catch them up. So I, I do think it would be really, really good. I don't know, I don't know where the community's gonna lie on it. I, I think the first, first thought might be, oh, no, I don't like it, year-round school. Um, but I think as you see it progress, they'll go, this is actually really, really good. And I think what was interesting too is when you said it on the FSBA, uh, presentation, I think it was you that mentioned that, that they didn't have any data that supported that year-round schools any better. But their year-round schools were A schools and they were all Title One. And I'm like, but we have data that says our Title One schools are, are usually not ranked as high. So that almost kind of is data, right, to say that, that, that.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a large scope of data.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not gonna rehash all the reasons why I'm not like comfortable with it. But I will say, I feel like the last time we had this conversation, we were all at least comfortable with having the conversation about potentially piloting it. Because to be fair, I believe you when you say people are saying these things to you, but I also believe it's coming from a community that had it before and teachers that have.
Not all of them.
But I think there is a good majority there that's comfortable with it because it's been there before. And so polling that community and maybe piloting in that community, if that's what that community wants, I think is fair to offer for them. And again, I don't like it overall, but if you want it to be successful, I'm, I, I'm with Ms. Campbell in her opinion. But I'm also in the opinion of, if you pilot it somewhere first and it's successful, you're gonna have a better opportunity of making it appeasable to other people.
If I could speak for a second, I think one of the things, I came into this when this was first discussed from an angle of, man, that's a heavy lift, right? And it was prior to our meeting in, at the Florida School Board Association where we had that presentation and some others. And as I started working through it, and then I remembered a moment that really is always gonna stick with me is, one of the first days that we were during the COVID, um, when we had COVID and we were running around and you guys weren't on the board yet, but I created a mobile feed. And so I was in the communities dropping off food to our students inside of the, the districts or the, um, housing projects. And there were kids that were not using their laptops, they were laughing about it and they were going and they worked, right? So what that taught me was, and we had very low engagement from those individuals that were inside of those, those certain socioeconomic areas on their, on their computers. That taught me was, is that the time that is lost in between the two classes or the time that they're summer, a lot of individuals that may be in that area find a larger drop than others, right? So then when we went to the School Board Association and we sat down and we started looking through the different, different model and stuff like that. And all of a sudden, when they had talked about the engagement they have in between those, and then I started talking to some people about it and the opportunities, I said, I can't, I became full on board. And I'll be honest with you, the reason is, is that I truly believe that there's a lot of, um, positive that can be there. I brought it up to Bill Monford, uh, head of the superintendents, and I talked to him. And he had brought up some examples that were from the past, that were close to the same model, that were very successful. I, I, I would make the argument that if we don't have the initiative to go countywide and if we go to do a pilot project, that we do it in multiple areas. Because one of the things that you'll find is that if you have a dynamic situation and it's done right, you may have two places, one may fail, one may be the other one. I have a feeling that this is a successful model. As an educator, I would have loved to have been a part of this, make a little bit of extra money. Um, I talked to my family about it, my wife, everybody else, she, she loved the idea of having those breaks off the normal cycle, not having the two months, I mean, even this Christmas break has been kind of crazy where we were like, come on, when is this gonna end? You know what I mean?
I know.
So it was a long one, so I appreciate you bringing it forward, support the idea, um, of the idea. And I, I look forward to, to working on it. But I wanted to bring that perspective, is that a lot of our Title One schools could really use this as a model. And I can't let, I, I'll be honest, there's teachers and people that I've talked to since then, I was like, hey, what do you think about this? Oh, great ideas, really? Like, really?
Yeah.
So there's that, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I would, I just encourage each one of you to ask your communities, to ask your teachers and your principals and, and start to just, that's a very unofficial poll.
I've totally been hearing, that's why I'm just saying, I think, honestly, I think it's fifty-fifty. I don't, I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you're gonna get it one way or the other, genuinely, I believe. I don't think it is totally against or totally for.
Well, I think that's part of the thing is. Opinions about it, if we can do it with, and we could pay them in intercessions as opposed to like what Charlotte's doing now, which is sometimes they're having, sometimes they're not, they're all doing it at one school to cover all three schools.
Right, I think that's the other thing is we'd have to really define what year-round school means.
Right.
Are we taking the same hundred and eighty days and just spreading them out, you know, differently? Are there additional instructional days, which means additional instructional days for the teachers, which means additional pay?
Pay, right, right.
So if you're having more instructional days, that is gonna cost more. Because you gotta pay the teachers and you gotta run transportation and you gotta feed the kids and you gotta pay the light bill and all that kind of thing. So part of it would be, you know, what does year-round school mean? What do we mean by year-round school? Do we mean, we're gonna go from July first all the way to June thirtieth? Or does it mean we're taking the same hundred and eighty days and just dividing them up differently? So that's.
Well, and that was one of my first ups is building the calendar. And so that's, you know, that, that's proving to be a little more difficult than I thought it was going to be, which.
Well, but I think, you know, um, the presentation that several of us saw at FSBA, it's officially the same hundred and eighty days spread out differently.
Right.
But with two-week intercessions in two different breaks.
Like July to May.
That are optional for the students. And at different times, those schools have been able to fully fund that, you know, have a full day, fully staffed with teachers.
Transportation.
Transportation, it's just like two more weeks, uh, four more weeks.
And they had ninety percent plus engagement.
Of extra school and they had ninety percent of their students come to that optional intercession. In fact, when they first did this years and years ago and it was all fully funded. Then as the funding went away, the intercessions changed to half-days, to, um, no transportation.
Sometimes.
Right, things that cause more, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're, you're gonna take the same hundred and eighty days and just spread them out, then it really isn't much of an increase in pay, I mean, costs. But if you're gonna add days, that's gonna cost more money.
Right, no, and I mean, I, I would assume that we would look at the hundred and eighty-day model just spread out, that, that was my.
Yeah, I think the, the benefits to that are there's more frequent breaks.
Right.
There's not one big learning loss summer, you know, but you still have even a little bit of learning loss every time you take a break, so to speak. You know, but it's a much more manageable schedule. If you, you're talking about teachers who are getting to the end of the semester and they're kind of burned out.
Right.
Well, you get more frequent breaks with the other one.
Right.
You know, and stuff like that. But we, you know, even if we went as a district to a hundred and eighty days spread out differently, we'd be the lone district doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Coordinating with the state on testing and, you know, with colleges and, you know, semester end dates and graduations and doing all. And so, you know, not that none of it can be, you know, that it can't be done, it's just there's a lot of considerations.
Right.
Yeah, but I think, um, you know, I'm someone who experienced a year-round calendar when we were overseas when I was a kid. And I thought it was awesome, it was great, I think, you know. I mean, that's how they did it there, the, the whole country. You know, so it wasn't, wasn't different. But, you know, school was on a, you know, basically three months on, one month off, three months on, one month off kind of thing. And, you know, just seemed to make more sense.
Yeah.
But, um, right now, I, I feel like we've got, you know, we kinda, kinda got it at the workshop a few weeks back to, you know, take a look at what's, how to do this, what it could look like. We did apply to the state for the pilot, you know, we haven't heard back whether we got that or not. Um, you know, if, in these conversations and work that we do moving forward, if we don't get the pilot and we want to, like, from the state and we want to do it ourselves, we can still do that. You know, it's just, you know, whether we find enough interest in the community and our staff, you know, that we want to do it.
Okay.
You know, because that's.
Well, that's gonna be my focus this year.
Best idea. Yeah, but we're not the ones that are actually gonna be doing it.
I just, like, it's just my true genuine opinion that like not one is better than the other. They're just different models. And some people find benefits in one because it's something they're attracted to and some people find benefits in the other. For me personally, I'm just like, this is what our community and our society is used to and I don't see the benefit of switching to it. But I'm okay, I'm comfortable with a community that has experienced it and wants it wholeheartedly. It being there and piloting there, it just seems like, it just seems really, really irresponsible to just like try and blanket it without piloting it somewhere. And again, I think the best place to pilot it would be someplace that's really wants it. It's the most buy-in of a community you can get and one that has somewhat experienced it before. And then, you know, you can, then we can use our own data from our own schools and see, like, how did that improve and benefit? And poll those families after it's implemented. And then make that decision if we want to do it to the rest. And again, I really just believe that the rest of the county would buy into it if, if you were able to point to a positive change right here in Brevard versus like, they're doing it in this county, because.
Well, I'll tell you, I, I don't know, it's because we had all these other things that were more newsworthy, but I, I haven't gotten a single, oh my gosh, I can't believe you're doing this kind of email, you know.
Or if we know, or if someone did reach out. I've got, I've got a few, so I'm like, please, please, no, which, that is true, follow point.
I think I had somebody reach out and they were watching the meeting, sent me a message. I got a message, I was like, just so you know, I'm for that, and I'm like, what?
For what?
Yeah, I had to go back and see, what were we talking about when they sent that?
And also, when you brought it up too, um, I made a comment about how, like, I don't think that's the best sample place to go. Because when you first said it, my brain straight, went straight to Freedom Seven. And I was like, I don't really think that's the best place for you to do, like, do a testing of, you know, growth.
That's our, I think.
Sorry.
The Challengers, I don't even, I didn't hear you make that comment, so that's funny.
But that, that's why I thought that, I was like, oh, that makes sense, I can see why they would totally be for that, you know. But there wouldn't be, how do you measure the growth and that's why I.
Yeah.
I realized about five minutes into the conversation.
Oh, she's talking about a different school, so.
Well, I was wondering when you said that, I was thinking she's thinking Freedom Seven.
I totally.
I didn't, I didn't even hear you.
I was gonna get back and listen to your take to see if you said Freedom Seven.
Because I was just thinking like, what kind of.
This is why we're supposed to visit schools outside of our district.
Freedom Seven is not in my district.
So many space schools.
I just heard seven, okay?
No worries. All right, well, um, I think we've gone through some, we got some good ideas for this coming year and it sounds like we're gonna take a couple of deep dives on different areas that really should hopefully benefit our school system as a whole. Um, Dr. Rendell, do you have any, I, I always feel bad that we like go through this and then we don't, we don't look to you and say, do you have anything that you would like to add as far as a vision or goal?
I mean, aside from the standard raising student achievement, trying to make sure, you know, we get back to scoring as a district where we used to.
Right.
Um, E-focus, I think, is really something that we're, you know, I'm gonna be working on. We just, um, you know, Mr. Trent mentioned trying to match up what we're putting on the table with what our community needs. the table with what our community needs.
Right.
But also access, you know? For example, like this summer, we're gonna use some of the last round of ESTR money to offer transportation, we're gonna open up some of our CTE programs in the summer to students who don't have access to those programs normally. In other words, if you live in the south end of the county, we don't have a welding program in the south end of the county, but we have one in Astron.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna use COVID money to, I mean, ESTR money to offer transportation and open up the welding lab, and Astron, and kids from different parts of the county can go.
Okay.
So, for example, the aircraft fabrication at O'Gally, you know, kids from Cocoa or north of our kid, or Palm Bay could, yes, we're gonna set up some, some hubs of busing and some hubs of CTE programs, and they're gonna open them up. But we really wanna try and enroll the kids in these programs that don't, can't normally attend that school.
Mm-hmm.
So they get exposed to things that they wouldn't normally get exposed to.
Yeah.
Can we also, like, take a look at that subgroup data that no one wants to talk about in accessing those programs as well, too?
Yeah, I, I know, yeah, I mean, I know we do that, but I think we can show you.
Yeah, well, I've asked a couple of times, like, cause when you look at, I'm gonna use Palm Bay High as an example, like, there's a wide variety of CTE programs, and unfortunately, there's a stereotype of where certain kids are going.
Yeah.
And, and that's just a warning sign to me that we're.
It's hard, because some of the, you can't make kids sign up.
I know, but that's also showing us that we're not introducing those kids to that option from their elementary feeder school, that they would have that opportunity with.
Yeah, I think that's, but I think that's CTE overall, even just, you know, not just certain programs.
No, I know, I'm just.
Doing a good enough job, I mean.
I think we need to pay attention to it.
We did, when we did visit Cocoa, and we went into, um, both their, um, manufacturing, fabrication, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Construction.
Instruction lab, and then we went into the auto body repair lab, that, those classes were very diverse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the biggest surprise.
I knew a little on the female side, but they did have.
But there were quite a few females.
There were, there were some.
And then I was actually at Rockledge not too long ago, visiting their auto shop program, and there were a lot of females in that classroom as well, and so.
They're the best welders, no doubt.
Yeah, I have a niece that's a welder.
Best at a lot of things, too.
No, if you go to welding, you go to welding unions and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
They're best welders, get picked up, it's all women. But I wanted to say something real quick to Ms. Jenkins, is, um, there is, Palm Bay does have the feeder into FIT. FIT has a dynamic.
I know, but they're usually, they're usually white kids. I'm just gonna say it like that, sorry.
I didn't know what.
But it's true.
What is it, what are you saying?
So like, so for instance, like our, like our STEM-based programs that are at Palm Bay, cause we have a huge diverse CTE program at Palm Bay. Typically, it's filled with white kids, and our black students are in different programs like culinary, and when we had fashion there and things like that. And I, I bring this to the attention, because it, we only started tracking this data like two and a half years ago. So we have it, and I'm sure we're making moves on it, but it's actually new. We never paid attention to it prior to that. Um, so it's just interesting to see, like, it, so for instance, going back to your, should we get rid of certain programs that are being underutilized? Totally with you, but are some of those being underutilized? Because we aren't really like, giving them that platform before they get to that high school that offers it. You know what I mean?
The other thing I thought about when he was talking about the underutilization is, some programs are not sixteen like others because of the instructor, because we can't find them.
That's true.
Like, the reason I fully believe that, that Bill McGinnis, oh god, he like, he makes that work, like, we better be, you know, the print, you know, salmon before he restarts, you need to have a succession plan, because that, it's, uh, it's, it's built on him, and so a lot of these CTE programs are built on the instructor. You know, Heritage has the only, or one of two, water treatment plant, and those kids can come out of there making big money, and they might graduate six a year. Part of it is, I mean, some people don't wanna work with wastewater, right? I get it. But some of it is, they've had a rotating door of instructors.
Right.
And when you don't have an instructor who's qualified and who's, like, the guy they have now, it's very energetic, but it's his first year there. So you kinda have to have that build.
Yeah.
You know, program, so we, we kinda have to work on it from all fronts, cause maybe we have a program that absolutely is necessary, will need the needs of the, needs of the community, but it's fledgling because.
Right.
We don't have the right person in there, so what do we do to get that right person in there? And the state's trying to help us with that, with, with making the flexibility and the, cause some of it is because unless they're retired and whatever, then they can make so much more money out of it.
Well, that, I mean, I have that situation in Tinesseville with our, our welding instructor, we have that. So we're, we're gonna be in trouble, because we're going to lose him, he doesn't have his teaching cert, he's not going to ever get it, he doesn't need to be doing this, he's doing it as really a community service, and he's pumping those kids out of there making at least sixty thousand dollars a year when they finish his welding program, going right into heat places and careers even, which I'm like, this is an example that we wanna see when it comes to CTE. But again, he's going away whenever the cutoff is, like, he will not. And so it's like, what are we gonna do at that point?
I brought in three organizations to help with that specific program last week, ten minutes, before we went to break.
That's good to know.
Out there.
That's good to know.
I wanted to get back to it though, cause I, I wanna make sure I hear you correctly, Ms. Jenkins. What you're saying is, is that from the elementary to middle school level, we're not advertising the correct career and technical, maybe.
Right, yeah.
Maybe, not, not, this is happening, the right career and technical pathways for the students in those areas, so that they know they're available when they get there.
That's just my feeling, and it's the feeling of some of the community and schools.
Okay.
And not that it's not happening, but can we do a better job? So that those, the, the community that lives there is reflective throughout those programs. And yeah, you can't make a kid do something, I don't mean like that. I don't mean that each program needs to literally percentage-wise reflect the community.
Yeah.
But you also shouldn't walk into one program and go, where's the community? Consistently every single year, like, that just shouldn't be happening.
And the reason I was asking, and thank you for saying that, is that there is an opportunity, um, when we were with the Economic Development Council, we created the Certified Production Technician Program. We went in, and I went in with Linda, and we created with the eight African-American churches in the area, a way to communicate to them to bring forward that message. And we found that it was more successful to go with the African-American churches in the area, to communicate that to the families, to do that. Um, the reason I was asking you for that is, is if there's a case there, um, then there's an opportunity for us to engage with them as part of that conversation, and get them to where it is. Because I'll be honest, I think the FIT connection at, at Palm Bay is probably one of the most underutilized opportunities we have in general, and it, it may not have gotten to the right individuals communicating. I mean, we've been in a tough spot with COVID and everything else.
Yeah.
But I would say that, that, um, thank you for sharing that, and I think that's something that.
And I don't mean like it's anyone's fault, or like shame on BPS, I don't mean that, cause genuinely, they didn't start tracking this data until two and a half years ago. And we've had a lot of things to deal with, right?
You know what would be really good, though? From the middle school standpoint, is maybe some kind of aptitude testing that we implemented that shows, what is this interest for these kids on, and as they're going into their high school? And can we possibly look at, hey, if we know that this is something they really love?
I'd be shocked if they don't.
I just think, I think it's more of the.
I, I'd be shocked if they don't.
Do they?
We already do, like, kind of a career interest survey and stuff like that. No, I think it's more these kids need to see themselves in those classes, that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
You know, parents may not know about the programs, and it might be a good idea to make sure the parents know about the programs.
Communication, also, I'm a myth, it's culturally, many of these kids elect not to go in the higher, the, the higher pathway because of what their peers. No, what their peers will say about them, that they do say.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be.
That happens all the time.
Well, and sometimes if you're a freshman, and you get dumped into a first-year CTE, the first year, a lot of times is more boring. You're not doing the auto body stuff and the construction, until you're in a second year, third year, fourth year program.
Yeah, trust me.
You gotta muddle through the first year of a CTE program where they're not letting you touch anything.
Yeah, you know, I've, I've heard from all the aqua science kids at Kewa Beach, cause this is a huge one.
They were really excited, huh?
Aqua science, and they're taking ag foundations.
Where's the oysters?
You're like, what?
I'm not saying it's a, it's a simple fix, and like, again, it's not, I don't mean that every program has to reflect the percentages of the community, I don't mean that. But like, for instance, and I'm using, I keep using Palm Bay as an example, just because I just know it better. But like, Stone is supposedly a STEM magnet school that feeds to a school with incredible STEM CTE programs, but the, the, the look of Stone isn't what we see inside of those programs at Palm Bay High. So what, why, why? What's, what's happening here?
And a lot of times, the kids will do those programs at Stone because it's been known for years to be a good science program, and then they leave Stone and go back to whatever they resound for.
Like, what can we do better to increase the engagement of that actual student body?
So in, so I've spent some time in different places with EDC, and one of them was up in Jacksonville. One of the most successful programs they have is they take the parents and the students on tours of their opportunities over the summer, kinda like what Dr. Rindell is trying to initiate, to give those kids that opportunity. One in particular is an entire factory of CNC and 3D printing. So they have the kids come in and do some fun 3D printing and CNC manufacturing. Over the summer, they actually hold a week-long camp, and they get the kids that are feeding in there to be their employers, and it's huge. So there are definitely ways for us to communicate down channel, to get them to understand. The only problem we run into is having that. We're kind of like a component where we're missing some of the spokes that he was talking about. If we have a very strong, uh, volunteer coordinator that's bringing the rotaries out, we may be able to get them to fund a bus to take children and families from a location who may not travel otherwise to another location over the summer. We're kinda like, we've got the ideas, and we just need to put them together. So I just wanted to hear you say that and get down to the bottom of it, but there's some huge opportunities we can do there.
That's good. All right, did you have anything else on your list, or you're?
I'm good.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the next topic, which is, um, ideas for spending the Juul litigation fund.
So.
Yeah, I'm like, I already got this.
Cause I'm probably gonna say yes, or.
So I asked, um, Lena to add this on there, because we did just get our first payment in November, December, right? It was almost a million dollars, and we were supposed to get the second payment, which I think you said was seven hundred thousand?
I don't remember.
It was, it's a lot. And then the other ones are smaller, like, the first one was a big one. But we're, we're talking about al- already more than a million dollars of, and I, I just wanted to see if anybody had some ideas. I talked to Dr. Rindell about, did we look at some of what?
That's not crawling, is it?
Yeah. No, no, I got the thing that was crawling.
Oh, I was like, that looks like a piece of rice or something.
Do we, do we look at, what, some of their other districts have installed the vape, uh, detective things in the bathroom? Uh, but I would want, I mean, now that this has been out for a while, we can kinda see what other districts have done that was successful and wasn't, cause then they've kinda stepped in it, you know, first, do we wanna look at that? Because it's a big time, one, the first-time purchase is gonna be big, but we, if we've got, you know, a couple million dollars coming in over the next few years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we look at that? Do we do, I mean, I think there's multiple things we can do with it, but I don't want it to be, I, I would like to be intentional, is what my idea with it, so that we, and, and keep it generally related to what the funding was for.
Right.
Yeah, or was, you know, the battle was over.
Yeah.
Um, rather than just putting it in the general fund and it gets used for whatever, which would be a good purpose, but I, I, now we have it, this one-time fund, I'd like us to talk about.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a really good idea to try to direct the majority of those funds to something related to how we got the funds.
Yeah.
Right, and so.
Especially since it's such a needs.
Um, so the good news is, we actually are, have two schools that are piloting vape detection devices in the restrooms.
Really?
I believe, yeah, I believe it's Kennedy and I think Palm Bay High. Kennedy for sure, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure of that. So, you know, we'll, we'll be able to give you some feedback from those two schools on the cost of those devices, and whether they think they're effective and helpful. And, you know, we can look at, how much would it cost to install those in all our secondary school bathrooms, or?
Yeah.
Half of the bathrooms in all our secondary schools, or two at each school, or whatever, however we wanna do it.
Yeah.
Cause it's such, I mean, it's still a huge health issue, it's still a huge discipline issue. Um, there, you know, how many kids, how many high schoolers have you talked to that have said, I don't go to the bathroom in school because.
Yes.
I don't want, that's where the kids are vaping, I just, or I know I don't go to that bathroom.
Right.
You know? So I have to go across the school, because I don't want, everybody knows that that bathroom is the vaping bathroom, you know, I mean, just, and my goal is not to get more kids in trouble, it's to.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do to, to minimize this problem, because it's, it's, like I said, it's a huge health issue, huge discipline issue, huge distraction and time issue and effort and resources. It's a mess. So I, I like that idea. And we may not need the full, however many, a couple million dollars, what was our total?
I think the total's around point eight from Juul. We were estimated to get like roughly two to three hundred thousand more from Altria. But their settlement thing's going to the court this quarter, so I'm not sure, they haven't said a date yet.
But with one and a half million dollars that we already have.
We should have.
Okay, well, I think, I think we're at about eight hundred right now.
Yeah, we only, after attorneys, that's before attorney's fees, so. Our first payment was.
Oh, that was our hit.
It's like the IRS.
We got the eight hundred thousand with after attorney's fees. So, they take their cut after with each installment, so they're actually getting a little less than if they took it all in total.
Okay.
What's your take on the legality of it? Are we good, strong there?
They aren't gonna, I had that conversation with the attorneys, they're not going to come after us, they said, if we, if we state it in general fund. And the purpose from the court documents is to go back to either education or detection within this court.
So we can use it for anything?
I wasn't worried about them, I don't care what they say. The one thing I was concerned about was the legality of having a device inside of a bathroom that is monitoring.
Just like a smoke detector.
It's a smoke detector, right. So, the only one I've ever heard of is Halo, it's Halo detectors, I haven't looked into a bunch of these.
Yeah, there's several, and basically, some of them detect radio waves that are emitted by the vape, the vape device. And so when it detects whatever it's supposed to detect, it sends an alert to whoever, you know, whatever administrator has the program downloaded on their phone.
Does it make a noise?
Yeah. The kid walks out of the bathroom and the dean stands outside.
Yeah, because I know, yeah, it'd be good for us to not let them know that we have it in there.
Right, sends, sends an alert and, you know, admin can respond. And if they don't respond in time, they look at the video camera outside of the bathroom. You know, so there's no, there's no privacy issues.
Okaloosa, Okaloosa is dead in a couple of years ago.
Yeah, you know, one of, one of the models from one of the vendors has an audio component to the device that, I'm not sure how it works, but it's supposed to pick up on if there could, could be a fight in the bathroom.
That's, Halo does, that's what they do, so.
It's.
I'm gonna go with, let's not do that one.
Well, it says that, well, the thing on here is that there's like keywords that students and staff can call for help using specific words. So you have like a keyword that triggers the system to, you know, I mean.
So, I'll find out, you know, how it's going at Kennedy and I think Palm Bay was the other school, but I'll find out and give you guys.
Have they already installed them?
Yeah, we've been using them this year.
I know why I've been there.
So, I mean, I think though, as far as the funding that we receive, that money should stay solely with something that's going to help with this cause. Not general fund, right? Is that?
Well, can we put it towards the ALC drug prevention programs?
Correct, we've also talked about, and like Paul said, you know, you can use it for prevention counseling and so on, so.
I mean, because we're paying for it, it's not like.
I mean, it's one-time fund, so, you know, it makes sense to, something that would be, it would be a big purch, we don't need to put it in our elementary schools, but it, you know, be a big purchase to do it in all of our secondary schools and our special centers. The first, and we probably need to, it would probably be wise, I'm thinking about our Russell, uh, Cheeto Mose, you know, to keep some aside that is the replenishment, maintenance, you know.
Other places.
Yes, it's being warranted, I'm sure, I warranted.
I would say, build out the infrastructure for the devices inside of the bathrooms and other places first before we utilize it. I would hate to come to a place where we're only able to fund three quarters of the.
Right.
I would say build that out in any.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get a ticket cost. Right. Get an estimate.
I would spread it out before, I'd concentrate it, like, I mean, more schools rather than all of one school.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think, I mean, I'm not saying we don't have vaping going out of our elementary schools, but I think we're more.
Well, it's not as prone to happen there.
And they're a lot more monitored, because elementary schools, you know, it's not.
A lot of times about them is in their classrooms, so it's not.
Or they're going all together at the same time.
And they're all holding on to their backpacks all day.
True, all those things, so, but all of our secondary and, and special centers.
Yeah.
Which is not that many, you know.
Well.
Well, the junior C, or the junior highs.
Yeah, I mean.
Thirty.
God.
You'd want it in the junior highs, I would.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they might almost be worse than the high schoolers, honestly.
Hundred percent. But we're talking about like thirty-something schools, not eighty-something schools.
And, and I think part of this is a strong communications ahead of us, putting them all in and doing it all. Because the bottom line is, is that when we're in Biara High School, say for instance, they shut down their bathroom store. They only have one bathroom for the whole frigging school to go to during certain times, and that is just disgusting. And so you've got all kinds of issues that can arise because of that, and I'm not, I'm, I'm all about it. I bring the handcuffs, get the kids, let's go. Like, I'm serious, like, I, this is disgusting.
Well, we gotta get them back on the right track, because honestly, they don't, they don't realize how damaging it is. And I don't think anybody really does, because I haven't been around that long. So I hate to see it twenty, thirty years from now.
Sold us healthier than a cigarette, so their parents are doing that.
I know, I know.
And they're going to get more, they're doing more in front of them than a regular cigarette.
I know, and then now they're getting it with T H E in a manner, okay, yep. So, all right, so no other discussion in regards to that, it sounds like we're all kind of in, in agreement there. We want some kind of monitoring in the secondary schools, so detectors of some sort, that would be great. So then our next discussion topic, Ms. Campbell, this is you again.
I can't remember what it was.
Permission slips.
Oh, oh. My existence.
Here we go.
So I've done some more research over the last couple of days, I say research, crowdsourcing of some of my friends in other districts and asking them, okay, here's what we're doing, and we're doing for all these things, and several of them did say, oh yeah, we're doing for most of those things. But I, I still, from what I have, have, you know, crowdsourced, you know, I'm gonna call research. I still think we're doing more and we, it's, and I know some of it's on us. And I don't take any of this as an insult, Mr. Gibbs, because I, you were doing your job and trying to steer us away from getting in trouble. But I'd like us to take a look at, at the language again, which I honestly don't, I pulled up. Because I think there's some of those things we're going that, just to be quite honest, is over the top. And I don't know that Dr. Rendell needs to be the one to say, oh, we're just not gonna do that. It needs to be the board, because, you know, if the state board, so the legislature put this, you know, a rule in place, and then the state board just really took it further, I'm gonna say too far. Because to be quite honest, I don't believe that our schools should be asking for permission slips for a child to get an award in an award ceremony.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
When the kids who are sitting in the audience, because they're not participating, don't have to have a permission slip. That's, you know, and I also don't think that the state, that if you're going to get tutoring from your own teacher, not, because it's tutoring, maybe, like, my son had to go in early to make up a test this morning, that would count as tutoring, but like, he, that's his own teacher. You know, that, that is beyond, I mean, clearly, you know, I know homecoming, even though it's a pain and the dances and stuff like that. And some, some of the, like, junior achievement, it's killing junior achievement. It's killing some, and clubs, I get it, because I think the clubs, specific clubs in particular, is probably what the legislature was trying to get at. But when we've got, I mean, we're doing, here's, here's one question that I had, we're bringing in John, what's his face, to do the coffee bean thing.
Do we get permission slips?
But, well, they have to have, because I have a ninth grader, they have permission slips if they want to go to, if they want to be the one, the kid that gets on the bus to go to be there in person.
Well, that makes sense.
And like, Mel High only had a hundred eighty spots.
But are they permission slips?
So, the first hundred eighty get to go. But the other kids who aren't going, they're going to watch it, but they're not having to do permission slips, right?
Correct.
Depending on the school, probably, no.
So how, so do we, are we doing it, like, if it's curricular versus not, I mean, where is the line that we're drawing? Because I just feel like as a board, if we give direction to our superintendent, that we want to lighten it up because it's killing so many things. We're staying cool, true to the, the spirit of the law that was the intent, but we're not, you know, killing awards program, because some of our principals are just, we're just not gonna do awards. Or we have kids who like earn an award, but they have to sit in the audience, they don't get to walk across the stage because their parent is one of the parents who just doesn't fill things out. And I'm working on the other side, I mean, I think, you know, when I go to Tallahassee next week, I'm gonna say, hey, I think the legislature needs to make some things clear, because the state board went too far. Can you fix this? And I will tell you, our junior achievement, in space, because junior achievement is one of the best in the country. And they have active, and I know Ann is gonna try to get her people to try to work the powers that be, but she understands that we're trying to follow the state board rule, we can't do anything about it. So without, without dishonoring the spirit of the law, I would like for us to give direction to the superintendent to say, let's, let's take another look at this and lighten some of these up, because we're really hurting students.
Yeah.
It's such an inequitable situation, because the families who never turn in anything, those kids are missing out on so much.
I have a question about, I don't, I don't, honestly, I don't know this law enough to like know what the language says specifically. But does it have to be a permission slips or can it be the opposite way? Like, what's frustrating about this is the minority of people are opting out of these things, or choosing to not sign it on purpose, in reality. So does it have to be an opt-in?
Yeah, for whatever, I'm looking for my email where I break all the language.
For instance, like, the ridiculous fact that I have to approve Frosty the Snowman, right? Like, I'm, they printed out hundreds of pieces of paper.
But I don't think that that is the, again.
No, but that does, is specifically on there, any supplementary video material.
Anything outside of normal classroom action.
You're offering tutoring, it's explicit.
It's explicitly in there.
You have to get a permission slip for that.
So, but is it explicit that we need permission? So can we get permission in the beginning of the year, in a blankety way, and then say there's an opt-out option?
Now, that.
The requirement is, you have to have the date, the time, the location, who's gonna be present, like.
That's what it says in the legislation?
I will tell you what I did with my son.
It's the legislation or the rule, I had it broken down in an email, I'm trying to find it.
So what I did for my son, who's a freshman, I, I put on there, before school, after school, any teacher he can do tutoring with any. So, and then they marked it in focus, so, but if someone.
That's, I guess that's what I mean, is like, any parent that's like, I'm good with all of it.
Right.
Then those people never have to get one again.
So we can, it, it's good to have this conversation, thinking about next school year, because we can have, because this happened in the, the school year had already started. We can have some things prepared in advance, where schools can say, list all your things that you're planning to do through the year, as many as you know, and go with your registration packet or online registration, have a separate supplemental form that says, do you get permission for, do, 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 to do through the year? Because then they don't have to get them all later, if they have the dates. But, and, and when I was asking, some of the other districts were saying, yeah, we're doing it digitally, so it's, we're not having to kill so many trees to do it. But I, but again, going back to even the tutoring thing, if you're working with your own teacher.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
That's not tutoring, that's, that's, I mean, that's curricular.
And you're on campus.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can say, like, when we have junior achievement, there's, you know, if junior achievement comes in and does the tied-together day and the, the girls in STEM day, they, they're having like half a dozen girls show up, now maybe the girls didn't want to do it, before then have choice, said to go one place or the other. And, you know, maybe the school, some schools do a better job of getting the permission slips out there.
Yeah, so that's a fact.
And so, that's a thing, but kids are missing out on opportunities. But then if junior achievement comes in and does JA in a day, we're not asking permission slips for that, because it's part of the curriculum. So it's such a wiggly, nonsensical line that we're drawing between, it's the same organization, they're bringing the same volunteers, but for this they don't have to and for this they do. Like, we're not asking permission slips for kids to watch the, the no barriers, whatever, assembly, unless they only, if they're going, but that's a field trip.
That makes sense, they're leaving campus.
But they're not have to fill it out to watch that assembly, but if we have some other assembly, then they do have to fill it out.
Or if a teacher picks a speech.
I actually thought we were requiring it from everybody, so I'll have to check with James.
But to me, that's, that's, if we've built in curricular and like, I know it's not necessarily directly related.
District chosen, no less, right?
Right, district chosen, it's approved not by the principal, but by the superintendent. And we certainly, we've advertised it, as a ninth grade parent, I've gotten plenty of notification from my child's school, we're doing this. And if I was like, I checked that guy's website out, I do not want my kid hearing from that guy, I could reach out to the school and say, no, and I want him to go sit in the library, read a book while it's going on.
Always have that option.
Right, always have the option, and, you know, I know this is a, a fine line, but I think that, I think we're just going too far. And I actually am sad that I waited this long for us to have this conversation, but some of it, we just knew, we needed to feel the full impact of what it was.
Yeah.
And see what other districts were doing too, because when it first came down, everybody was like, what are you doing, what are you doing, what are you doing? And.
Well, to be fair too, we have been under the thumb and eye of F D O E more than any other district to begin with too, so we always had to be more cautious than everyone else. Just like, because the language is probably going to restrict how much we can dwindle down, but hopefully there is some we can. At a minimum. I'm all for teacher and principal autonomy, but I'm about to go completely counter to my belief system right now in this moment. The fact that we have some principals that are not allowing secondary supplementary materials, because they don't want to deal with that situation, or they're extremely limiting it, is absurd and should not be happening, and we have to message that.
Brown movie, that's what that is, yeah.
Because, and I get it, I get their fear, and like, and it's not just one principal. I get their fear, and, and I, I don't blame them for feeling that they're gonna get scrutinized, or their teachers are gonna get in trouble, and they think they're protecting people, but it's not okay, because then we have an entire school of kids that are not having access to engaging, fun curriculum that their teachers can be bringing to them, and/or experiences and speakers and things of that nature.
And that's a sec, it's happened at the same time, but that's a terrible problem, the instructional materials is another one. Different schools are handling that, but I will tell you.
But because, because some of them, you have to give that permission form, right?
But the movie thing, that's different, because, because, and I will tell you, I've talked to some principals about that, because I think some of that got spun very badly. There was a certain school that didn't allow a band, a grade of teachers to do, to watch a movie during a holiday time, they're like, oh, no, no, no. But that had more to do with integrity of instruction. And there have been some times, I could talk to some of our principals, and it wasn't that specific situation, so I'm not telling anybody, but where you had a group that were not, they had not, their instruction was not happening, they weren't meeting their goals. And then they wanted to show an afternoon full of movies, and the principal said, no, you're, this is instruction time, we're gonna maintain, we've got work to do. So there's kind of, but then it got spun as, oh, the district, it always, the board, of course, the board, the state, whoever is not allowing kids to watch a forty-five minute long movie about Charlie Brown Halloween or whatever.
There are though, there are specific schools out there that are just, they're basically telling their teachers not to do that, not to bring stuff in, not to, not to switch it up, kind of just stick to what's in front of you. And again, I, I believe it's just out of fear and trying, thinking they're keeping people safe and they're trying to cut down on, on issues. But if we can't minimize those papers and all that stuff, like, we need to then at least have a very clear directive from the board and the superintendent of what we expect and our opinions, because I don't think, I honestly don't think that our staff really probably knows either, because we, we didn't know what was going on with the papers. We don't even know how to interpret the law.
Well, it's subject to interpretation, which obviously.
But I think we have the liberty to be very clear about what we expect and what, what we really think it should be. And then, I don't know, hopefully that'll trickle down.
We've had some community groups, like some clubs, I think junior two might want to have been one of those, that went to the legislators and said, did you know that, and they're, they didn't write the state board rule, that wasn't their intention. So, and I, I told you, one day I'm walking to the workshop, I had Paul Burns, the chancellor of the D O E, on the phone, and I'm trying to get him to tell me that we were going too far, and he wouldn't do that, he just kept saying, follow the counsel of your, he was doing the.
Yeah.
Follow the counsel of your, of your attorney, and I'm like, okay, who's trying to keep us out of trouble? He's like, again, no, no, no fault on Paul.
Tell you, follow the language, I found the email.
Okay.
Where it's, Rule six A ten point oh eight nine governs school-sponsored events and activities, and defines school-sponsored events or activities as an event or activity the school of enrollment created for students to study or participate in while in the custody of the school district, or field trips, extracurricular activities, or other supplemental programs and activities as defined in Rule six A ten point oh eight five. Six A ten point oh eight, or, yeah, ten point oh eight fives define supplemental program as extra academic assistance such as tutoring or remedial help that is provided to students in any subject area occurring before or after school, on weekends, or during the summer, where provided by or through a school district or on-school property. Extracurricular is defined in one thousand six point one five sub-two, which is any school authorized or education-related activity occurring during or outside the regular instructional day.
So the awards program, I'm gonna argue, is not any of those things, because it's just, it's a recognition. So I think if we could come to any.
Where I come in, just to clarify, is that education-related. It's an award for their education-related activities, which is one thousand six one five, and that is a lady.
In and of itself, it's not, I'm gonna, I think you're bling devil's advocate.
I know.
Devil. But in and of itself, it's not an educational activity, it's a recognition moment. You know, it would be kind of like a Valentine's party, you know, except it's not, you know.
Oh, that is a rich one.
As the board get to say, hey, we're drawing the line here and we're willing to take the risks.
I, I, to me, as a board member, I'm willing to take that risk on awards programs, for sure.
But, okay, but then what, so that plus the instructional material things is why we're dealing with things like videos and speakers coming into the classroom?
Videos is.
It's not really related to the instructional materials thing, that's totally different.
So what is that related to, this?
I don't know what.
That was a different state board rule.
Yeah, that's a different state.
That's the one that says the principal has to approve every.
Any outside instructional material.
But why are, like, so, like, what, what is dictating or driving the belief that we need to have permission forms for those things?
It says you have to have parental permission for any of these activities. Yeah, I mean, it has to have, it has to, here's what you have to include in the permission.
So what in there is triggering that, though?
It says, extracurricular is a main problem, Rule ten point oh eight nine provides must require signed parent or guardian permission. So you have to have signed parent guardian permission forms for the event or activity that include at a minimum the nature of the event or activity, the date, dates, and time, times of the event or activity, specific location, and types of sponsors, guests at the event or activity, and the method of student supervision provided, such as anticipated number of chaperones.
But if it's, so, why are we classifying watching a video or having a guest speaker in a classroom, like a sixth grade classroom, as an event or an activity?
That issue hasn't come, I don't know what that.
Do you know what I mean? Like, to me, why isn't it just good enough for parental notification for the teacher to say, dear parents, on Friday we're watching Frosty the Snowman, if you have an issue, please contact me.
See, I don't get the Frosty the Snowman.
Well, I'm just, I'm using, I'm just using an example.
But like, if we have an assembly.
Dear parent, I have the speaker coming in to our classroom, as like a guest speaker.
I would like to look at the assembly idea again, because I think, it seems like, it would appear we've had a double standard. We, we're having a double standard.
Except that that was instruction.
Okay.
Because we did a unit on his book.
Well, and I would, I mean, so when we have the tied-together guys and the JA women in STEM come in, those are assemblies that are, to me, along the same lines of bringing in John Gordon and, I keep forgetting the guy's name.
Eric Weinmeier.
Eric, thank you, Eric Weinmeier, because they're tied to the instruction. It's also motivational, but it honestly, it's tied to the resilience curriculum that the kids have to do, the five hours of resilience curriculum.
Could not just meet that standard, I mean, honestly, that seems like that would, it would go towards it.
Those, those are the two things, I mean, I, I think that the intent, if I recall, if I, the intent of the legislation that spawned that state rule was specifically around things of clubs. You know, the parents needed, you know, with the idea.
Let's call space bait, it has to do with LGBTQ issues. That's what they're trying to, that's what they're trying to do.
But, but a club.
Any club, even Christ on campus, I mean, if you, if you're not a believer, and I mean.
I get you can apply it to that, but let's, that's the motivation behind it, it wasn't for this.
But when he talks about the days and times that they meet, what is that, that sounds like?
They had their mind on one thing and didn't think about the long-term effects of like this.
But the tutoring is in there, when he was reading it, it's very clear tutoring. But I still think if you're getting, if you're working with your own teacher to like make up a test or come before, get extra help during lunch, I think that's different.
So here's what I'm gonna say about that, and I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate on this side of that. What happens as for my parent's side, say you don't know your kid's struggling in school, so, so you don't know that they're, they might be failing in class, or they skipped last Friday and now they have to make up a test, and you didn't know for whatever reason. Like, I think the reason behind asking for them to give permission for these additional things is again, just to inform the parent.
I've had that happen.
But I think notification.
You've had that happen?
I've, I've finally contacted a parent, and I'm like, the, the kid has not been showing up for, you know, I'm here in the morning, I'm here, just. And they're like, I've been dropping them off every Tuesday and Thursday to see you.
Had they had to sign a form to be there, then.
But there's a difference between notification and permission, but how many kids are not.
They still will get permission and still not come to my room.
Right, like, my point is, like, why can't we just notify?
Because their parent.
Why are these things constituting?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I don't know if, if a teacher's sending home multiple, I guess that'd probably be good to ask our, our teachers, are you guys sending home requests for this tutoring and not getting them returned? Is there a high rate of that?
I think our schools, most of them adopted at one time only for, for before and after school.
It's more like, it's more the other experiences, like, I don't, I don't know what the end result ended up being, though, like, I got a call about how the ALCs were gonna have this inspirational speaker come in and speak to the kids, right? Like, what better impactful experience can we have for those students? But that's a community of kids that they couldn't get permission slips for, back from, and I don't know what happened in the end, they might have been fine, but, and I don't know if the district just said, just do it, I don't know, I don't know what they did. But I know that they had like six permission slips from both ALCs, and like, that's, that makes things like that really hard, because we're limiting opportunities to our kids that they want to.
Which I don't think was the intention.
No, no.
Of the spirit, I'm going back to the spirit, maybe not the letter, or way of people interpret the letter of it, but the spirit of the rule, certainly not the spirit of the legislation. So I, as a board, I mean, I would, I would like to see, as, as say, awards programs, if they want to have an awards program, no permission slips required for anybody. I would like for us to say, let's take another look at assemblies, so that we're being consistent, and so that if we're bringing people who are speaking related to in, the standards of.
On their campus.
On their curric, you know, either like related to coursework, or related to the resilience standards that.
That kind of covers it, honestly.
We make notification, we make it broad, we are having these people come in.
Don't stop notification, of course.
Right, and make it very, very clear, because I don't know a parent that, you know, if I found out, where, where the things have gone wrong and people invited different groups, and oh my gosh, it, no one knew until it was already done. If we make, we're very broad about notifying, notifying who's coming in to talk to the kids, but it's related to standards, I would like us to take another look at that and, and be consistent and say, and err on the side of, no, we don't have permissions, have to have permission slip for every single assembly, because I think we're really killing things that we don't want to kill, and that was not the spirit of the rule.
So, one of the issues that you run into when you allow assemblies to happen where there's a guest speaker multiple times, before this happened, there were speakers that came that all of a sudden you found a background to, that we may not have allowed them to be a speaker. And that's where we ran into a situation, and I think.
That was just like a insane, ridiculous deep dive, that wasn't.
No, this, these were legit.
That was intentional.
These, these were legit, that had come forward where there was serious.
Seventeen pages back to say they were linked to Black Lives Matter.
Ms. Jenkins, please, I'm trying to bring it up.
That's my.
I think that the issue is, is that that's where some of the individuals who crafted this may have had some concern when they heard that. And there are some instances where there's some deep dive on people, it's like, come on, that's not even, but there were some that came across my desk that had been requested, that had some issues, and I think that would have, you know, would have gone to the spirit of this law. So I'd say that speakers, you gotta be careful of, that's all.
Well, and maybe that's something that has to be principal approved, or, or they are.
I think you should just go with district approved, that way it's something like tied together and JA. Districts approved that. We've approved that, so we'll take the hit.
That's it.
If you leave it up to the principals, then.
But we, but we already do.
And they're either not gonna do assembly.
Permission slip for JA and tied together.
No, no, I'm saying, so I'm sorry, what I'm trying to say is like, principals right now approve things.
But if we move it up to the district, yeah.
Wouldn't require a permission slip if we say if the district, district.
Right.
Approved assembly, then you don't need a permission slip.
Because what we're running into is a situation where we have tied together, like, let's face it, like, we know that the ones that we're bleeding on are the tied together and some of those organizations.
They're really good.
Big part of our school district. I love that idea, Dr. Rindell. You do a district-wide approval role and we'll support you a hundred percent. It's just those one-offs that show up in the school.
And then, you know, we can tell the principals if they have somebody they want to bring in, they need to get us to approve it.
Yeah, tell them.
You know, and then.
I don't, I don't know how I feel about that one.
I don't, I know, I'm a little nervous about it too, quite frankly, because.
I don't see why we're then taking that, like, that simple autonomy way from a principal isn't, isn't necessary.
Well, they could do it, they could not ask us for approval, they could still do it, but then they have to get a permission slip.
And I think as a principal, that would be something I would.
Not require the permission slip.
I, I would want that protection.
But explain to me why, like, can't we just, can't we agree that if there's a guest speaker and it's not just the teacher making the choice, but the administrator at school making the choice, why can't we implement the same exact structure and policy where it can just be a notification?
Yeah, if the majority of the board, if that's what you guys want, I'm more comfortable.
Okay, I, what I meant by why, I was like, am I missing something in the language?
I, I feel comfortable going on the route that Dr. Rindell said that if we go up there, because I promise you that what's gonna happen is, is that somebody's gonna do that. And then we're gonna have a situation like we ran into over the last couple of years where somebody approves at the principal level and then all of a sudden there's an issue, right? Because the principals don't have the ability to know everything about the people that are coming in and doing their things. I think there's no problem. I mean, you only have three or four of them a year that, that are like that. Send it up if you have it or send the permission slips out. But giving the principal the autonomy to do it, it puts them in a bad spot. And I'll be honest, I think that they'd do it anyway if the opportunity was there. That's my personal feeling.
I just, I don't like to take away autonomy when we don't have to.
We're not, like, if they still want to do a guest speaker and get permission slips, they could still do that.
It puts them under an umbrella of protection.
But if they don't want to go through the process of getting a permission slips, then it needs to be a district-approved speaker.
But who at the district, I mean, okay, so I get.
I just, I don't like it pretending that they have a better judgment than the principal themselves, that's all I'm saying.
I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna, uh, let's, uh, you know, you don't want to say what we don't want to say, but right now that might be good, but I mean, I'll be good later on. I don't know, or it may, you know, depending on where you're at on it. I, I think you're opening it up to, yeah, uh, to where it could be a very dangerous spot for our district. Um.
You're saying that if he approves blanket, that's difficult on us?
Absolutely. It could, but not him. I'm not saying, I don't even know if it'll be him, it might be somebody else at the district. But just say somebody get, I mean, you can go as extreme as you want to go on this on either end and it could end up being bad. So, again.
I guess, because we started this conversation off with, now we're talking about protecting people, well, that's not, that's not what this conversation was about. This conversation was about limiting permission slips, right? And so I don't see why we can't give that autonomy to a principal if it's, if it's a guest speaker that they approved to just allow notification at that point. Um. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And I, I get very frustrated when we make blanket statements that things have happened in the past, but we don't say specifically what they are. I, I know exactly one of them that happened and that actually was approved by district, it wasn't the principal. Um, so.
Which then speaks to what Megan's saying is if it's a different district, a couple of years.
But I also argue that that was ridiculous and insane and had nothing to do with what the person was speaking about. But whatever, it was still district-approved, so that wouldn't have solved that problem either, right? We're trying to get rid of permission slips. That's the goal of this conversation.
Right, well, or at least just make them make a little more sense than what they do right now, so.
So sorry, and I get rid of them.
I think, uh, I think the awards ceremonies, that's an easy, I, I would, I think that's easy. You don't have to have a permission slip for that. I think parent notification is important though, because a parent might want to come and be a part of it. Uh, but a permission slip to say a child can't walk across the stage to get an award because your parent didn't say it was okay, that's unfair to the child. I mean, especially if the parent just didn't return, you know, the form. So I would be willing to go there with you on the awards ceremony. I, I'm a little skeptical on the other just because I, I have concerns that I, it could get us in trouble. I really do think that it could. Until they tighten this law up a little bit.
Right, well, I, at least I would like for him to take a look at.
At least the district ones.
The consistency of, you know, what, what is, let's, let's just take another look at the rule. Let's take a look at whether some other districts are doing, specifically around assemblies. It does look like we can get out of the tutoring thing because when Paul read that, it's, it's the description of tutoring. I still think if you're going to make up a test or whatever with your own teacher.
I don't think that would be, if you're going to make up actual classical program, that would not be covered by permission.
Okay.
That's not tutoring. That's like, you were out with the flu last week, you missed a test and two quizzes. You need your scheduled time to come in and do those.
Okay, so we're not turning kids away at the door or things like that.
Megan, are you opposed to the district-wide events that are very common and happen all year round? Like JA and the tied together not just being a parental notification from the district?
No, I'm not, I'm not opposed to those ones. I mean, honestly, and I don't know that, is there not a way to tie that into considering it part of resiliency or curriculum?
I think that's what, what Donna was saying.
Any school authorized or educational-related activity, so if it's related to an educational activity, it's, needs a permission slip. Based on the thing, and I gotta tell you guys what the law says.
But if CTE, if CTE plumbing program brings in a plumber to come talk to the kids for the day.
But CTE programs have permission. Your, your parent signs a bunch of permission forms. So just like sports, we aren't doing permission sport because they have the FHSA packet, which has a separate permission form.
Or is your same thing.
Field trips, I didn't harp on because they already get a separate permission.
But we have, the reason I bring that up is because we have some other JA programs, I mean, because I'm more familiar with them, where they bring in, they have a speaker series and they come in and people sign up from all different, uh, career fields. And they come and talk about, this is what I do, this is how I got there, this is my education, this is my background, and they take questions. We're not having to do permission slips for them to come into classes and, and talk to every kid, are we?
We, we would, if, if we were doing an assembly, like if you were gonna have them come and speak. Fifth period and you bring all the different kids in there, yep.
But if they're going to speak in the fifth period class.
It's just so crazy.
But see what I mean? Then we're, that's inconsistent. So you can have a guy come into a class and be part of the instruction.
We gotta move him to the gym, it's a whole nother conversation.
Then we have to have permission slips. That, that's what I'm.
Like, I just don't understand why we don't have to just notify.
Makes more sense consistently, wise, you know, and it's not killing really valuable programs because kids' parents are not checking in. So I, if we don't want to go whole hog and say, all district-approved assemblies, but let's find, if we can find some middle ground and maybe he brings it back to us. But I'd at least like to ask him to look at that.
I, I'm not opposed to looking at, I'm not opposed to looking at what other districts do, but I, I think you just have to be cautious of it because again, it could end us up in some big trouble.
Well, we can leave it the way it is. You gotta have permission slips for all of these activities except for awards ceremonies. And then I can get you a list of the district-approved, like, this is district-wide, like JA and tied together. And I think we have a couple others that we know we've been doing for years, you know, and then we say those.
Yeah.
Theoretically, the board could bless those and then we don't have to, you know, we do notification, you know, next Friday, tied together is coming on campus, is what they do. Junior achievement's coming on campus for women in STEM, this is what they do. If you don't want your son to participate, please let us know.
Yeah.
You know.
I think that's fair. I would like to know what the district-wide.
Yeah, we, we may have like five and that's it.
Yeah, it could be five. Yeah, sorry, I, I wish I could go at peace with just saying, yeah, let's go there and let the district take on the blame that I.
Something. That's at least opening the opportunity to tell our kids that are literally not getting to experience these things, which is just ridiculous.
And my daughter's school didn't have an awards banquet.
Really, Megan, I just wanted us to open the conversation as to where we are because, because I don't think that Dr. Rindell needs to be going out there without, because if we're going to get in trouble, um, it, it's not gonna be this one school, this one principal, it's gonna be the district. So if we, you know, we are his cover, right?
Right.
And so if we said, you know what, you did exactly what we told you to do, and if we get in trouble, then we'll backtrack and we'll do what the state tells us to do. But we are in, going to interpret this rule as a board, even maybe sometimes against it.
Paul's like, I'm just here first.
He told us.
It's recorded in the minutes, but we think this is what the rule is telling us to do, so this is how far we want our district that we are responsible for to do. And if the state comes down and says, no, 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 then we'll go, okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go back to, no, whatever. But this isn't like the state said, no more mask maintenance day. Somebody started bringing up sort of subject and we did a mask maintenance. Anyway, this is not that. They gave this, it's still, even though some of it is explicit, some of it is very vague. And that's why every different district is doing it differently. They gave us intentionally vague rules. So that we gotta figure out what we're doing and Revard just went farther than a lot of other people.
But again, we kind of had to.
Did the same thing with the masks though, too, because the state didn't say no more masks.
But that was very explicit. That was very clear. So. This is, this one is not clear and I, I'd like for us to get our final clarity.
Yeah, I know. I, I don't disagree. I'm trying to simplify it. I just, I have pause about saying blanket. I, I would like to know what those assemblies are that we're talking about that happen at the district-wide level, so. Um, are there any other discussion topics that anyone has? Hearing none. I guess we can adjourn this meeting.